I'd like to call in to order the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for April 2021. We are meeting today at four o'clock PM. Our normal meeting is the third Thursday at 5:00 PM. Every April, we have a budget workshop and we'll move up the meeting time an hour to accommodate that additional briefing on the upcoming budget. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, if I may, I'd just like to congratulate you this month.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. I've had the yips on this Pledge of Allegiance for a couple of months and I completed it today without major error. So, as I said, we're here today at four o'clock. We have all of the trustees here, so we do have the presence of a quorum. And the four o'clock purpose is to have our budget workshop. And I know that Dr. Bound and Rachel Leers will kick that off, but I do want to talk a little bit about the process and the timing, because this is a year-round effort. And Rachel and her team and all of the budget administrators on campus start in the fall to get ready to present a budget the following spring to be adopted formally in August after a formal public hearing. So, that's what we'll... The process today is to start the board's review of the budget. In May, we will be considering a management budget, which allows the administration to then issue contracts for faculty and others. And then we will publish in July the official budget to be the subject of a public hearing in August. For transparency purposes, this year unlike... or not unlike every other year that I've been on the board, we have a Budget Workshop book, which is a preliminary look at the budget. When the budget is adopted, another book is created that is the formal budget. It's an 85-page document, which goes into great detail about where we get our money, where we spend our money, and what we spend it on. So, with that, Dr. Bound, I'll turn this over to you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're pleased today to walk you through the work that Rachel Leers, our CFO, and our team across the college has done cabinet and otherwise to develop an initial budget look for you. From the very beginning, from a budget planning process, we've asked our budget administrators and their teams to, at the core of what they're considering from a budget standpoint, to first and foremost be thinking about student success. And the requests that they're making from a budget standpoint be based on either their direct contribution to student success, or how in an indirect way they contribute to student success. And, to that end, only ask for that which they need. So, it isn't just a matter of taking last year's budget and saying, "Yep, that looks good," but really looking, dive into their budget to make sure that as they develop requests, that their requests are aligned strategically to improving student success and the student experience. And if I remember correctly, Rachel, the number of requests that we received, or at least the dollars of requests that we received, are down from what we would have received in the past. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
All right. And then, as we're developing this, taking into consideration the needs that we have within the college, but the needs of our students, and also taking into consideration the factors outside of the college, our commitment to growing enrollment this coming year and beyond, and to do so through successful students and through attracting new students. And as we proceeded through this process and as conditions continue to change around us, to factor in such things as the impact of unknowns, such as what would Senate Bill 13 have an impact on budget for future years and so forth. So, in front of you, you have not only the budget book, but you also have a notepad and pen. And so, to ease the flow of the presentation, I'm going to ask if you have a question to quick jot it down, and then we'll come back and answer all your questions. But just from a flow of presentation standpoint, thought that that might be helpful. All right? So, with that, Rachel Leers, our CFO. Rachel?
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So, as mentioned, tonight, we're going to start by reviewing the book that you all have in front of you. It's also Post-Undergraduate College's website. This is going to take us through the administration's proposed budget for fiscal year '21 and '22. So, that year will start on July 1st and conclude on June 30th of 2022. So, we'll move pretty quickly through the book. Like was mentioned, there are about 80 pages of information. We won't be able to touch on everything in great detail. And then I'd like to conclude from there with a couple of PowerPoint slides to kind of summarize before we move on. So, with that, and before I forget, I also wanted to acknowledge and to thank Chandra Russell. She's the college's budget analyst and has done a terrific job again this year in coordinating our budget process and preparing many of the slides and a lot of the information that you have before you tonight. So, with that, moving through the booklet, I thought I would start on page six, which is our updated budget guidelines. And so, the trustees will recall that these were originally adopted by the board back in December, and that was such that we could get started collectively with our budget development process. As outlined in red on the page, there are two guidelines that the administration is proposing updates to. And the first one has to do with assessed valuation and the property tax levy. So, initially, you'll recall, we had started the budget development process with an estimated increase in valuation of 4.5%. And so, while we're still comfortable with that, after getting updated information through the county appraisers office, we have decided to move forward with a proposed reduction to the tax levy rate. And that is really based on the requests that were received through the budget development cycle and acknowledgement of the college's current financial position and reserve levels. And so, we're, again, we're initially, the budget guidelines contemplated a mill levy rate that would be the same as the current year. We're now suggesting moving forward with a slight reduction. And we'll talk a little bit about more about that in more detail. The other item that's highlighted in red on the slide relates to state aid. And again, when we started the budget development process, we said, "We're going to budget state aid flat with what we're getting this year." Based on some of the continued conversations and the differing budget versions that have been moving through the legislature, I think we're more comfortable with a slightly more conservative approach for budgeting for state revenue, state aid for next year, and are suggesting about 2% reduction, a slight reduction, from the actual amount that we received this year. That equates to about $400,000. And it really just acknowledges, I think, the fact that we'll need to continue to monitor the state general fund balance and activity throughout the rest of this fiscal year from there. So, those are the only two changes to the budget guidelines, like I said, that were originally adopted last December. Budget calendar, as Trustee Muswell mentioned, it's quite lengthy. It's a better part of the year that we spend on the budget development process, so I don't think we need to spend much time on that. And moving just through the document here on page 12, wanted to start with our proposed revenue budget. And this is the college's general fund for next fiscal year, where we're looking at proposed revenues of $165 million. As far as sources of revenue, as the chart depicts, the largest source of revenue for the college continues to be our ad valorem property taxes. So, based on our estimated budget for next year, that total would be around $111 million. And that's with the proposed slight reduction to the tax levy rate. That's going to be about 67% of our revenue in the general fund next year. The next largest item, as far as revenue for the college, comes from student tuition and fees. That's estimated to be about $27.8 million next year. That's about 17% of our total revenue. The revenue that I mentioned coming from the state through our operating grants, about 14% of our total revenue in the general fund. And then we have just a little bit of investment and other income, about $3 million, that 2% that rounds out the revenue budget for the college. Moving on to page 13, this takes a look back at revenue sources over time. So, again, looking back over the previous 10 years, I think what this chart illustrates is, first of all, about a $40 million total growth in general fund revenue for the college. That's about a 33% increase from fiscal year 13 to fiscal year '22, as proposed. And of course, that's primarily been driven by growth in valuation in the county. Obviously, it demonstrates quite a bit of concentration in the property tax category, and really does continue to demonstrate the increasing support of the tax base for the college from a revenue perspective. Next, we have a look at assessed valuation and mill levy. And this slide goes back a little bit farther. This one takes us back 20 years. And from this, over this period in time, you can see that assessed valuation has more than doubled in Johnson County and is estimated to be about $12.2 billion for next fiscal year. In the middle of the chart there, I think it's interesting to note, there are a couple of red percentage changes. So, there were a couple of years during the recession when, year over year, assessed valuation decreased. And so, that meant that property tax revenue for the college decreased. In response to that, and in response to some reserve spending that was happening at the time, there was in fiscal '14, as you can see, about a 3/4 mill levy rate increase that the board adopted at that point in time. Since then, from fiscal '15 to present, we have seen continued significant growth in valuation, 5%, 6%, and 7% for a few years there, although for the past two or three years, the increase is decreasing, if you will. So, while we're still positive, the percentage year-over-year growth is slowed a little bit from where it was a handful of years ago. With regards to the mill levy rate then, I talked about that quarter mill increase in FY '14. And since then, there have been some actions to reduce the tax levy rate, including as proposed, including the proposed reduction for next year would be three in three of the past four years, slight reductions to the tax levy rate. Next, we have a calculation of a total, or a look at a total mill levy for a residence located at College in Quavera in Overland Park. And really, what I think this tells us is that what we're looking at here is that as a portion of this property owner's total tax bill, or their total levy, the college's portion of that has remained flat over the, over time, over the past 10 years anyway, at about 8% of the total. And then you can see there, in addition to the JCC levy rate, the Kansas Board of Regents, the Alatah School District, City of OP, and then the county library and Parks District levies, all listed there in the chart. So, again, this is just a little bit of context, a little bit of information that we look at historically when comparing the college's tax rate to other tax and jurisdictions. Next, we have a look at the estimated tax calculation for that residence. So, we got an updated average appraised value number through the Office of the County Appraiser, and that's $347,000 for the 2021 tax year. And so, in applying the residential assessment rate of 11.5% and the college's proposed mill levy, that would generate property taxes owed to the college of about $363,000. So, again, I think when you're looking back at a chart like this over time, over the past 10 years, the most important thing to note is, again, the college's mill levy rate has stayed relatively consistent, and the average appraised value of that home has gone up by about 50%. That's primarily what's driving the increase in taxes, too. Moving forward into year '17, this is a look at our ad valorem property tax revenue in all funds. So, most of the charts that I'm going to be talking about tonight have to do with the general fund of the college, our primary operating fund. This does illustrate, in addition to the general fund, the levies that we have for special assessments, which is typically, basically a pass-through, if you will. We use those dollars to pay assessments and taxes to Johnson County wastewater. And then we have our capital outlay fund. And that mill levy was recently extended, I think two months ago. The board had voted to extend our half-mill for capital outlay for another five-year period. And those funds, again, that mill generates about $6.5 million a year, and those funds are dedicated for capital projects and for deferred maintenance. So, again, just wanted to show the different sources of the tax levy, as well as the growth over time. And this chart indicates, you know, about $50 million over the 10-year period in increase in ad valorem property tax revenue. So, moving on now into student tuition and fees, which is our second-largest source of revenue at the college, we do a lot of analysis around enrollment and also tuition and fee rates, not only for JCC, but for other institutions. Look at that every year as part of our process in setting our tuition and fees. But this chart, I think, again, we're going back about 20 years, and it illustrates that our peak, as far as credit hour enrollment, was in 2011. And that was about 379,000 credit hours we generated that year. And so, what we know about that is, of course, what we always talk about is the inverse relationship between the community college enrollment and general economic conditions. So, again, specifically during the recession, when unemployment rates were growing, many folks returned to community colleges to pursue educational opportunities. And so, that's not unique to Johnson County Community College by any means. That is, that's a nationwide trend. So, that helped to fuel some of that enrollment growth, and then we know that we have seen a steady decline since then. Going all the way through the estimated 3% decrease for next budget year, I believe from 2011 to 2022, it's about a 23%, 24% total decrease in credit hour enrollment over that point in time. However, as gloomy as that sounds, I think that it's important to, again, recall that that's not unique to us. This is something that other community colleges throughout the country have experienced. And so, the chart at the bottom of the page hopefully helps to illustrate that a little bit, that while, yes, our enrollment figures have been decreasing, and we're aware of that, we have actually fared better than many other institutions. And so, this chart was provided to us by our institutional research office and compares our five-year enrollment decline of about 5.9%, and that's based on head count. So, a slightly different measure than my credit hours at the top of the page. But it does indicate that compared to the national public two-year average, other community colleges in Kansas and Missouri, again, we have fared better than most. One other thing I'll say about that chart is it's pre-COVID, so we know that that has kind of put us a little bit further behind. And again, we know we have work to do in this area. We have goals around increasing enrollment. However, those are not baked into the budget. So, the budget approaches the revenue for student tuition and fees more conservatively, so that if we're, you know, assuming that we have goals around credit hour enrollment, those aren't yet reflected in our budget Next, we have a look back at last fiscal year, the fiscal year we concluded on June 30th of 2020. It's always interesting, I think, to look at this to see where our students come from, where our credit hours are generated. And so, this tells us that last fiscal year, 72% of our credit hours were generated by Johnson County resident students. And that percentage is fairly stable over time. We don't tend to see a lot of fluctuation in that number. I will say that in the navy blue color up to the top left side of the pie chart there, that out-of-state and metro rate zip, that number has slightly increased as we have rolled out the metro rate, the metro tuition rate about five years ago. We have seen that that component increase over time. The bottom of the page talks about residency in terms of dollars instead of credit hours. And so, those Johnson County resident students, while they're 72% of our population, they only generate 65% of the revenue, because the tuition rate that they pay is lower than the out-of-state and out-of-district rates for other Kansas residents. A little bit of comparative information, looking at this year's rate and, again, our proposed rates for next year, which are flat. We're not proposing any increase in tuition and fee rates for the college for next fiscal year. This is just, again, for comparative purposes. We look at the undergraduate rates for University of Kansas and Kansas State University, just, again, for sake of comparison, as well as the metropolitan community colleges in Missouri. Their in-district rate for the current year of 2020, 21 is $107 per credit So, the next few slides take us through the tuition and fee rates that we have established by residency. And again, the colors on the chart break out the tuition from the mandatory fees. So, when we're talking in terms of $94 per credit hour for a Johnson County resident student, that is technically $78 of tuition, which goes into the general fund, and $16 per credit hour of mandatory fees, which go for other purposes, student activities, sustainability, parking and roads. We'll talk about those more in a minute. But again, I think that this chart does a nice job of illustrating, not only would this be the third consecutive year of flat tuition rates for county residents, but I think, again, going back to FY '08, '09, and looking at the impact of the recession on, not only we looked at property values, but looking at tuition and fee rates, in response to those decreases in valuation and decreases in property tax revenue, the college increased the tuition and fee rates significantly over that period of time. We know enrollment was growing, too, in order to make up some of that lost revenue. So, again, a $25, $22 tuition rate increase between FY '08 and FY '15 for Johnson County resident students was very significant. And certainly, when we're looking longer term at our budget and our reserve levels and those five-year financial projections, that's something that we keep in mind as we're thinking about contingency planning and hopefully being able to avoid, through maintaining reserve levels and strong financial position, having to roll out such significant tuition increases that, like those happened in the recent past. For Kansas residents, and these are folks that do not live in Johnson County but live in other counties within the state, these are the historical rates, again, dating back to FY '08. These rates are obviously higher than the in-county rate, and I think the trend tells much of the same story over time. Similarly, our out-of-state and international student rates have increased over time. Those are currently at $223 per credit hour, and these are the highest individual residency rates that the college currently assesses. One thing that's unique about this category is, again, the metro rate, which started in fall of '16, so it was fiscal '17 was determined. So, that applies to students from certain border counties in Missouri, if you will. And so, instead of paying $223, they're paying $138, which is our metro rate. And as I mentioned earlier, it has been, I think, from an enrollment perspective, successful in helping to generate enrollment from those areas. I talked earlier about our $16 per credit hour mandatory fees or our required fees. And again, these dollars do not go into the general fund of the college. These are for specific purposes. For example, our student activity fee of $7 per credit hour goes into our student activity fund, and that's used to fund various student events, clubs, organizations, and probably most importantly, student grants and awards. We've had a $5 debt reduction fee for a number of years, and that is available to help us service our revenue bond debt. The parking and roads fee is restricted to maintenance of our parking lots and parking garages. And then the sustainability fee of $1 per credit hour has been in place since 2010. And those dollars are directed to our CIF fund, our Sustainability Initiatives Fund, and used to implement sustainability practices and activities throughout the campus. So, total required fees of $16 per credit hour has been flat for about seven Next, we have a look at our credit course fee schedule. And so, my comment on this is always, yeah, I think JCC is one of the few institutions that all the course fees fit on one page. We just do not have a lot of course fees at the, at the individual course level. Most of these, as you can see, relate to private lesson fees for music, music lessons. And then we have a variety of fees associated with our railroad programs and the partnership with BNSF. There would be no plan to increase for next year on any of the credit course fees as well. Next, we have kind of continuing along with the benchmark information, a look at the other Kansas community colleges. So, this information is published on the Kansas Board of Regents website and does a comparison of the, again, the 19 community colleges throughout the state, their tuition and their required fee rates by residency. So, there's quite a bit of detail there. I think we've tried to simplify it, if you will, in this chart on page 29, by organizing it by institution on a low-to-high ranking. And so, as you can see, for the current fiscal year, which is 2021, that the $94 in-district rate, and these are the in-district rates for each institution, for us, a JCC of $94 is the lowest cost statewide. Next, we have a look, more of a national look at public two-year colleges. And this is some information that we glean from the college board each year. This demonstrates the past five years, the average published in-district tuition and fees by state. So, I think the key takeaway here is obviously that statewide in Kansas, we're among the most affordable in the nation for an average published-in-district tuition and fee rate for a public two-year institution. And finally, the last bit I have on revenues is another bit of information that's taken from the Board of Regents. And this is just a look by institution for the community colleges, but also the technical colleges, at the tiered technical education state aid and the non-tiered credit hour grant for the current year, FY '21 versus last year, FY '20. So, if you'll recall, we had budgeted, you know, we were putting our budget together right at the onset of the pandemic, and there was so much uncertainty around this particular revenue source. We had budgeted for a 15% reduction in state funding for this year. And as you can see here, our, the revenue that we actually received was about flat with where it was the year before. So, we've been very fortunate in that regard. So, that's all I have on revenues. Moving into expenses, wanted to talk a little bit about the proposed expenditure budget for next year. Again, in the general fund of the college, our total budgeted expenses as proposed are about $175 million. When you look at the cost structure, about $120 million of that, or 70% approximately, is dedicated to salary and benefits. The college has about 2,300 employees, full-time and part-time, that make up that total. In the blue section, our current operating and grants category is about 17% of our budget. That total has remained relatively flat. That's going to include things like our utility costs, insurance costs, travel, departmental supplies. So, that category has not seen much growth. Actually, I think budget to budget, it's actually decreased from this year, as departments have continued to kind of trim down their budget based on their reduced operations on campus. The capital expenditure category in green of $19 million is a significant allocation for next year. Included in that is $15 million planned use of reserves for our science lab renovations. So, I think you'll hear more about that project at our Committee of the Whole meeting later in the month, as far as an update on timeline and budget, hopefully. But just know that that $15 million is included in there. And that's really the second year of a proposed three-year budget plan for that renovation. And then in the gold there, the last 2% of the general fund budget is debt service or principal and interest obligations that we have due on our 2017 certificates of participation. And then the last slide I have on expenses is, again, a look back at the previous 10 years. Obviously, the total budget has grown by about $40 million over this time period. The largest individual category expenditures are, of course, within capital. And I talked about the science lab renovation, but also for the two years in '19 and '20, we had significant capital allocations to support our facilities master plan. So, that has helped to bump up our capex spend in the past four years. And then within the salary and benefits category, if you look at FY '20 compared to FY '19, you'll notice if you look at FY20 compared to FY19, you'll notice a jump there. And that was when we implemented our Verb Plan, the voluntary employer retirement benefit. And so that is a benefit that's available to certain eligible folks upon retirement, and it looks at accrued sick leave and years of service. So in order to implement that, we were required to book a $6 million one-time reserve, and then have an obligation now of about $700,000 annually to fund the payments associated with the Verb Plan. So that's going to be driving some of the increase that you're seeing in the salary and benefit category over time. So as far as our book goes, I was going to stop there because the next 20 or 30 pages are really detail-oriented, lots of details on individual department budgets. But before I leave this book, I wanted to go to page 83 because I was thinking of our January Management Committee meeting. And I think Trustee Smith-Everett, at that time, we talked about our CFI ratio.
I saw this.
And we, this has been in the budget book every year, but it just doesn't often get a lot of press. And it should, because it is an important part of the conversation. And again, what this is doing is basically taking our audited financial report, which was done at June 30 of 2020, and it consolidates all that information into four core ratios. So we're looking at primary reserve viability, net operating ratio, and return on net assets. And boiling all that down into a single score of institutional financial health, a measure of financial health. And this is based on a longstanding and pretty well-regarded strategic financial analysis for higher education. And ultimately, what the score tells us is that as it relates to our strategic plan, the Johnson County Community Colleges is well-positioned and has an opportunity to focus its resources to compete in a future state. And so, again, I think when you look at our budget plan, the science lab allocations, future planning, future strategic support for strategic planning, that that's exactly what we're doing. So again, with that, I'm going to leave our book and jump over to a quick PowerPoint, bear with me here for a second, that I had put together, just to summarize a few things before turning it over to you guys for questions. So again, I have our updated revenue guidelines. I talked about that already, which includes the administration's recommendation to adopt a budget for property tax revenue that would result in a slightly lower mill levy rate, and then adjusts our estimates around the state operating grant funding for next year. A little bit more detail about that property tax revenue analysis. Again, this chart shows the adopted budget for this year, FY21. Our preliminary budget for '22 is in the middle. And so that's, again, where we had originally said, well, we're going to plan on leaving the mill levy rate as is, and we're going to take the revenue from a 4.5% increase in valuation. So as I mentioned earlier, upon completing the budget development process, seeing what our requests were, looking at our reserves and our financial position, we're currently recommending adopting a revenue budget that would be slightly less than that, about $1.1 million less than originally proposed, which would equate to a tax rate of about 9.09 mils. A little bit more about expenses, a few more details on salary and benefits. As far as number of positions, we are not budgeting for a total change in our total number of positions. I think I mentioned earlier, we have about 2,300 full-time and part-time employees, and that's what we're moving forward with for next year. One new thing that I wanted to talk about as far as process is our vacancy review committee, and that's been up and running for about two months. And that includes myself, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Weber, Dr. Leslie Harden, our Vice President for Human Resources, and Colleen Chandler, our Human Resources Director. And we are reviewing before posting and before hiring all requests for part-time, regular, and full-time positions to make sure that they are appropriate based on the level of campus operations. Again, a note that we do sometimes reallocate positions between departments. That's typically done within the academic branch at the department level, based on enrollment levels, not so much on the staff side. And then wanted to clarify, too, that this budget that you're looking at tonight does include a 1% placeholder for salary and benefit increases. So while we're still in the process of negotiations with the Faculty Association, we do have a 1% placeholder built into the budget currently, and that equates to about a $1 million price For operations and capital, again, I think earlier we talked about the budget administrators at the college. There's about 120, 130 folks with departmental-level budget responsibility. So they are critical to the budget development process, and they've really done a great job, again, this year, I think, at using their program review and their planning activities, looking at how COVID has impacted their level of campus operations, and really done a good job of taking that into account in submitting their budget requests for next year. You'll recall that last year, we did cut about $1.2 million from our operating category in some accounts that we felt would be directly impacted by the pandemic, and those were things like travel and events, which we couldn't have, some supplies in some cases. So we haven't gone back and fully reinstated those across the board. Again, it was really at the department level for folks to request reinstatement of any of those funds. And again, I think that folks have demonstrated a real good effort at doing that appropriately based on their projected level of activity for next year. We do have a placeholder of $500,000 built into the operating budget category for strategic plan initiatives. Of course, we're still working through our strategic planning process, but have allocated some funding to support those initiatives as they'll be determined. I talked about the science lab renovations. That's a $15 million ticket that's included in our capital bucket. We have $1 million planned, again, for active learning classrooms, and this has been an ongoing priority to update classroom spaces around campus. I was looking back, and I think since 2017, we've done about 30 classroom improvements, and those are everything from equipment and furniture to carpeting and painting, really updating some fairly outdated classroom spaces. So that continues with a $1 million allocation for next year. And then I talked about our debt service requirement on the 2017 bonds. Those have a 20-year amortization period, so will be repaid by fiscal 2037. In summary, general PTE fund budget for next year. I talked about the $165 million planned for revenue and $175 million in expense. So if the budget is fully expended, that would equate to about a $10 million use of reserves. And again, this budget includes a $15 million allocation one time for construction renovation of our science labs in the CLB building and the Science Building. One additional, speaking of reserves, bit of information that we wanted to make sure and include, as I've talked so much about post-recession and how did we get to where we are today, is a look at our reserve levels over that period of time. Because, of course, where you're at on reserves is an important thing to be aware of as you're getting ready to adopt a budget for the subsequent year. There's a lot going on on this slide. The blue bars are as of July 1, which is the first day of our fiscal year. So keep in mind, we get a large tax distribution from Johnson County in June. So this comes, that number is derived about a week later. So when you look at our audit report, or the first day of the fiscal year, you're thinking, wow, gosh, the reserves are this much. But we also monitor the green bar, which is as of December 31, which is the lowest point traditionally in our fiscal year. Because, again, we don't get another significant tax distribution until January of the subsequent year, which is also when we collect money for spring tuition and receive a spring distribution from the state. So because our board policy on reserves talks about maintaining at least 25% of our budget in reserves at all times, we look at those December reserve levels as kind of our low watermark, if you will. So again, I think this chart does a nice job of demonstrating where we've been at December 31 and at July 1 over the past 13 fiscal years, again, dating back to FY08, and shows the fluctuation over time. Including the science lab allocations for FY22 and FY23, I didn't put projections on here, although the projections are in this book. We're looking at about 30% for FY22 and 29% for FY23. And those are very preliminary, but that's kind of how I think that will look based on the budget that we've got here today. And then the mill levy rate is in the red line running across the top. So it's hard to see, the line doesn't really move that much for that 3/4 mill increase in 2014, but that certainly did help to increase the reserve levels going forward from that point in time. So finally, just again, some things for the board to continue to consider as we work to adopt the budget for next year. A continued note about strategic planning and the college's desire to have the ability to effectively leverage our reserves or our resources to support our evolving strategic initiatives. Legislative changes are always something that we need to be aware of and be mindful of as we're developing our budget. I know we spent a lot of time at the Committee of the Whole meeting last month talking about Senate Bill 13, and we've talked about how that will not be effective for the year we're talking about, '22, but the following year, fiscal '23. And in a nutshell, it will require us to, if we want to take revenue from another increase in assessed valuation, we will have to sort of repackage that. We'll have to calculate back to a revenue-neutral rate, which I think would be probably about at least a half-mill lower than where we are today, and go through additional notice and public hearing requirements through the county clerk, notifying all taxpayers in the county of our intent to levy those tax dollars before adopting that budget. So the important thing to keep in mind here is that the rate, the levy rate that we adopt in May next month for FY22 is going to be the baseline for those revenue-neutral rate calculations going forward. So the spirit of that is, this is taxpayer or property tax transparency. And so there will certainly be some additional process associated with that. And then the commercial property valuations, we've talked about this for a long time, and you know, it just doesn't really go away. Last week, I read about a successful appeal for the Bass Pro Stores in Olathe. Those were appealed up through the Court of Appeals, and they were successful in that. As I understand that, when those appeals are granted, and I think that they basically said that your 2016 and 2017 tax years, you were overcharged. So those, some of those dollars will need to be refunded to them. And so those will be taken out of subsequent tax distributions that come to the college. So those continue to be appealed kind of on a case-by-case basis. I think the statute currently for property valuation for commercial properties like that talks about a fair value method, but the big concern or the big risk here is that if a hypothetical lease or this dark store method ever became the statutory method for valuing those properties, that that would then officially reduce quite significantly the property tax revenue, not only for JCCC, but for other taxing districts as well. So we'll continue to monitor that and know that it's still out there. And then reserves, of course, I just talked about that. But continuing to monitor the reserve levels as we adopt the budget is certainly a consideration as well. Last thing I have is just our remaining budget timeline. So again, there's no action on the budget today. Next month, at our board meeting, we'll be asking for a recommendation to approve this management budget, which would go into effect on July 1, again, the first day of our new fiscal year. That's our working budget, if you will. And then later in the summer, in August, we will hold our public hearing and adopt our legal budget, which is required by statute to be filed with the county clerk's office by August 25. So I will stop there and see what questions you guys have.
Rachel, I guess, first of all, thank you for a very thorough presentation. As you've done, I don't know how many years you've done it now, but we've seen that year-over-year where we see everything in the budget, both from, again, as I mentioned earlier, where it comes from, who contributes it, and where we spend it. And then the rest of the year, I think our job is to figure out why we spend it that way and why we receive it that way. You had a number in there that said there was a 1% placeholder for salaries, the salary line, because we're still in negotiations, and we want to be careful not to turn this into any part of a negotiations discussion here. But did that 1% equals about how much a million dollars?
Correct.
Did that include a compensation, a benefits line, or is that simply salary?
That part is salaries only. There is also a slight increase in benefits. It's like 0.4% that relates to things that are, things that, benefits that relate to salaries, so like your payroll tax obligation and our contributions to the 403B plan. Those are determined on the, based on the take-home salary. So as a percentage, that's a much smaller number. But yes, it's in there.
Okay. Just for board members, I'm going to ask each of you to have an opportunity, and I think I'm going to go officers and then seniority. So I'll start with Mr. Snyder as vice chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Rachel, great presentation, as always. I've got a question and then a comment or observation. First question is on the science labs. You noted we're in year two of multi-year, and I know, I think we're trying to consolidate down three years, if I'm correct. What did we spend last year, and what are we spending, I guess, in the '22 budget?
Right. So it's roughly a $30 million price tag. That's kind of the budget that we're still operating under until we get final numbers through the procurement process. We basically budgeted $4 million this year to kind of get started on the architectural and engineering studies, 15 in '22, and then that would be the last $11 million in '23.
Got it. Okay.
And if I could just, just to build on that, because I've had conversations with several of you as trustees, that talked about a two-year project. And when we talk about it being a two-year project, we're talking about the two years of the construction phase.
Right.
Total project, three years, construction phase over the next two years.
Got it. Well, I appreciate the budget book, and I've looked through a lot of it, but I'll probably have some follow-up questions as we go through this process. But what I wanted to address tonight was the mill levy. I appreciate you put in the point 10, point 1, however you say that, reduction. I think that's a positive step. I do think that we need to look at being more aggressive on the mill levy. I would recommend that we start looking at a quarter reduction and maybe have room to go more. My main reason for that is really the fact that our reserves can withstand. And when I say reduction, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we reduce our expense budget at this time, that it could just be paid for out of reserves. Although, without me digging more into it, I don't know how much room we have to reduce the expense budget to handle that. But I do have ongoing concerns that our reserves are too high. And I guess I would note, of course, you know this, but for any public watching, when we talk about reductions in the mill levy and the reductions that we've done the last couple of years, that in no way is an actual reduction in mill levy money that we're receiving. It's we're accepting less than we could. So I just think everyone needs to be understanding of that. But that's really my overall comment, is I hope that we can be more aggressive on that. I do have broader concerns with flat or declining enrollment, that we are not adjusting on the expense side to keep that rationalized, that we can't continually process going down with our student enrollment declining and us continuing to spend more money. It's just a model I don't think will work. So thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you to Vice President Leers and President Bowden and everyone who put that together. I have to say, as I was sitting here beginning to formulate my thoughts, in my own mind, I think we're ahead or better of where I thought we would be a year ago. And so I think that that's good. In my own mind, I think that our reserves helped us do that. And so I think with the foresight of the trustees in 2013, when we voted to raise the mill, and the three of us sitting here did that, and the previous administration did that, generally, I'd obviously disagree with Trustee Snyder, although I'm not sure he's wrong on specifics, but generally, I would disagree. I serve on my son's daycare board, and in an argument I made to keep costs and employment numbers where they were, was that we needed to be around and in place when we came out of the recession, when we came out, any potential recession, when we came out of any potential downturn. So, you know, I'm fine with expenditures being where they are. I understand revenues being where they're at and at a cut. I understand revenues being where they're at, and that a cut may actually be a raise. I, I'm not prepared yet to conclude where I'm at on that, but I think overall, we're in a good, good place. I will note to Trustee Snyder, I mean, we didn't have water or juice available when I walked in the door late.
You gotta get her earlier.
Well, I know, I just, usually we have a whole bunch sitting there.
There is some.
Oh, is there? I can't wait. Always, thank you, Rachel, and I appreciate it.
Trustee Ingram?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Rachel. Great presentation. My question might be somewhat complicated after we just heard from Trustee Snyder about his recommendation or, or the fact that he would be interested in a quarter-mill reduction. Does, how does that affect that Senate Bill 13? I mean, is that, that will affect it, correct? Is that a better position for us to be in? Should we even, is that, is that a consideration? Is that something that we should be employing into our decision-making at this point?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, it's something to consider, because what it is going to say, again, is if next year, we're wanting to take any sort of, of revenue, additional revenue from valuation increases, we first have to roll back to a revenue-neutral rate. So whatever, wherever we land for FY22 is going to be the starting point for that revenue-neutral calculation. I think it's going to put us back, you know, if, if, say, property values go up another four, four-and-a-half percent next year, I think that probably means a revenue-neutral mill rate for us is about eight-and-a-half mills. So that's where we would start. And then if we wanted to get back up to 9.09 or 8.99 or whatever it is, we have to package that and present that as a mill levy rate increase, because that is higher than the revenue-neutral rate. So we will have to publish notification of our intent to do that
Right, right.
to all of the taxpayers throughout the county.
Right. And, and I understood you to really make that claim earlier. I, I know I'm, my question was probably somewhat confusing, but it just seems to be, you know, we have a recommendation from you all for a 10th mill reduction this year. So I guess I was just questioning, you know, why that and why not the quarter now?
Yeah, I mean, I think that based on where we're at with our commitment to the science labs, the other pieces of our budget, strategic planning on the horizon, that that's, that's where the administration has started off recommending, where
Sure.
we think that makes the most sense.
Okay. Do we, and a final question that I have, I mean, I, I did take a few minutes and contacted you with some questions that I had, primarily about dark store theory.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
No, no, no. But you went over some of those things, so that was really helpful to have had that conversation with you previously. But the other question that I would have is, do we see an option or an opportunity in the future to perhaps lower tuition?
To lower tuition rates?
Yeah.
Well, that's certainly the opportunity of the board every year, as we start the budget development process.
But I mean, that's, that's not really been a consideration.
Not at Johnson County Community College. I'm aware that some other institutions have taken that strategy.
Okay.
But we'll start the budget process for next year, you know, in September, October, and those will be the kind of conversations that, that we'll be having.
Okay.
We can have.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Rachel, thank you. Again, outstanding presentation. This is my 12th budget workshop, and the detail gets better and better all the time, so thank you. Couple of comments and then a couple of questions. When the, and I, and I know this is a different time and a different era, but I'd remind the board, when the college was set up in 1969, the residents supported this college with a tremendous degree of support. I forget the percentage, but it was very, very high. That was based on the assumption that the college would be funded 50% local property tax, 25% state, and 25% tuition. And I'm really pleased where our tuition is and comparable to other colleges, not only in the state of Kansas, but around the country. I think we've done a nice job of trying to be tuition-friendly, although we, we would like to see it reduced, and yet currently, our, our tuition is, is below that 25% of the total cost. A comment on enrollment. And I, I was just sitting here thinking about it, back, I guess, to my superintendent days, trying to predict how many graduates we might have 18 years from the date of birth. And I, I think it would be interesting to look at our enrollment in 2003. Johnson County provides 72% of our students. And so if you, if you looked at 2003, I don't have that slide up, we had about 10,000 students, as I recall, enrollment. If the county continues at 72% of the county population, it would make sense then that, my mask is all cockeyed here. It would make sense that if the enroll, if the population increases, which it has in the last 18 years in the county, then we should be getting more enrollment. I'm trying to get this straight. So that's just something I think we need to consider, no question, other than are we, are we, are we making a fair assessment about what our enrollment is compared to the population we have from which to draw? And 79% of that enrollment comes from Johnson County and the metro rate, and I'm really pleased that we supported the metro rate when we did. Just something to think about. A question I have is, when you did the Kansas community colleges, there were a number of colleges that on the in-district rate had not available. Is the district rate the same as the resident rate? And I'm just curious why they wouldn't have an in-district rate when most of the other colleges do. Not a big thing, but I was just curious about that. A question that might not be able to be answered today, but I think we should think about, is you mentioned that regarding budgeted faculty positions. It's my understanding, Dr. Bowden, we do that twice a year, and I think that's in Dr. McLeod's bailiwick. I guess what you're saying is then, if enrollment drives a demand for another faculty position, we have to wait a year to get that done. And again, I don't expect an answer today. I think we review full-time positions twice a year based on previous discussions, but if we're trying to meet current market trends, and if a department has a tremendous growth in enrollment, I hope we don't say, well, come back next year.
Yeah, and I just, let me clarify. With regard to the positions that are in the bargaining unit, the full-time faculty positions in the bargaining unit, there are a certain number of positions that are budgeted by the college all the time pursuant to the contract. They may not all be filled at any given point in time, but they're in our budget. And so, you know, to answer your question, there is the opportunity to access those positions and fill them midstream, if you will, in the middle of the year, without having to wait another year to, to do that.
Well, I, I'll visit with you about that, Dr. McLeod. I, I just would like our college to have the flexibility that if a department has a tremendous increase, and I, I hope we don't have to wait a semester or a year, which I think we do, but that's another thing. Because of the enrollment, to me, I, I get concerned about, and Trustee Snyder made, made a good comment, and I've made it before, a number of universities around us have had to cut, have had to cut staff and faculty because the enrollment isn't there. And I, I, I think it's important for our staff and faculty to realize that if our enrollment continues to decrease, we just don't keep the same number of people with five or six or seven or eight students in a class, and we have to make some decisions about efficiency. So just something, I think, to think about. Regarding the dark store, the dark store theory, and again, you might not know the answer to this, Paul, you might have some information about this. But in regards to Senate Bill 13, if the dark store theory comes to play, and we have a large volume of lost revenue to the dark store theory, do we need community support to increase the mill levy to get us back to a revenue-neutral? In other words, we'd have to rely upon the residential property tax to make up that gap and just to get back to neutral. It doesn't say, I don't understand that it says that. I, I think we could go ahead and may have to increase the property tax tremendously to make up that gap, but I, I have concern about that. In regard to reserves, you've seen the chart, and we've been as low as, what, 16% over that 10- or 12-year period, and as high as 38%. We're at 36%. I believe it's important to have at least two or three months' operating capital in case bad things happen. And I appreciate the concern for having too heavy a reserve, because I know people look at that. We're blessed, we're tremendously blessed, an account that has good resources. But I am concerned that we continue to pick up that percent of support by the local property tax from now to 67% of our revenue. I think we need to be concerned about that. Anyway, thank you, Rachel, and to the whole team putting it together, it's great detail. Our, our college is really positioned very, very, very well.
Mr. Chair? Trustee Cross?
The trustee yield for a question, where would Trustee Cook like to see the reserves at? Like what percentage?
I'm sorry?
What percentage would you like to see the reserves at?
Well, like I said, I think it's really important to have two to three months. We're probably pretty close to that at 30%, 30 to 36. Rachel, I, what, what, what's our monthly operating cost?
I mean, 25% would be three months.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think it's a little strong, but I think we also need to be cautious about it.
I respect your opinion.
I think the trust, I think this board should never get in a position of using not reoccurring revenue for reoccurring expenditures. Once that begins to happen, then you begin to be in trouble. But thank you for asking. Trustee Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rachel, so much for this very informative packet and all just the details. It's really great to know that, thank you. What is the current rate for the, do we have a current default rate for Johnson County right now for property taxes?
We have a 3% estimated delinquency or default rate in the budget for next year. This year, we budgeted 4%, and that was a little too conservative. I think, again, last year, going into the pandemic, we were just thinking, you know, that the collection rate could really drop off. And again, fortunately, it didn't happen that severely. So typically, we would be, for many years, we used a 2% delinquency factor. So I think we thought for next year, realizing that we're not completely out of the woods, we'll go to 3, and then perhaps back to 2% the year after that.
Is that a cumulative of residential, agricultural, and commercial property taxes or just residential?
That would be for all of the above.
All of them, okay. So you're saying that it, 4% was conservative, so it could be more, close to 2%, but it's hard to say?
Yeah, we're using 3% in the budget for '21, '22 that I just presented. I should have, I think I had it on my slide and I forgot to say it, so that's a good.
Oh, you're okay, that's fine. The other question is, so the 1% for salary raises that's built in, is that regardless of negotiations, will that happen?
No, that's really just a placeholder. We wanted to put something in the budget, just kind of as a, a starting point. If, for example, we negotiated a 2% raise, then we would need to put another million dollars in the budget. On the other hand, if we negotiated a 0% raise, we would take that million dollars out. So it's very much just an original, kind of an estimate, a placeholder at this time until the negotiation process is complete.
Okay, so there, is there a standard rate that normally happens? So is, is that included in that? Is that what the placeholder is?
Yeah, you know, usually in a, a negotiations year, we have used a 1% factor just kind of as a starting point for our budget. But, you know, you'll remember the last contract, we negotiated 3% each year over three-year period, so that was, those actual numbers were in the budget for the, the past three years.
So with Senate Bill 13 has interesting language, so it says that we don't set the mill levy rate, but that we set the budget.
Right.
So as we talk about the mill levy rate, I think that's kind of the older language we're used to doing. How do we lower the mill levy rate under Senate Bill 13?
Yeah, I mean, and you're right, the, the, the actual terminology is that the Board of Trustees adopts the budget. So you're adopting the budget for revenue. So if you're adopting a revenue budget for $111 million in the general fund, that equates to a mill levy rate that's about a 10th of a mill less than what we have now. So it kind of happens in, in reverse, if you will. But the board adopts the budget, the county officially sets the tax levy rate at the end of the, near the end of the tax year.
So if we focus, I'm sorry, go on.
No, go ahead.
So if we focus on the percentage that we want in the reserves, is that better for us to talk about than the mill levy rate?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably more correct technically to focus on the revenue dollar amount, so I don't have my slides up anymore, but that $111 million in general fund revenue is the number to focus on. If we wanted, you know, less revenue, we would maybe knock that down to 110, 109, whatever, if it's a quarter-mill versus a 10th, and then back into the tax levy rate from there.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of the 25% for our reserves. I think that's our policy, so it'd be nice to get back to aligning ourselves with that policy. So as far as what that mill levy rate will be, it's more we got to focus on what our budget will be for revenue stream for that. So I appreciate changing the thinking, and it's, it's going to take a little bit, so I apologize. When I look at just what's going on in our county, and, you know, I'm starting to do some numbers, yeah, we have 1.7 million residents in the metro, and there's only 2,143 homes on the market, and the last two weeks, we had 80,000 buyers see only 2,000 homes. So there's so much pressure going on in our community right now. And then with the extended forbearances that are in discussion, it used to be June 30th, that now it might be the end of the year. Well, that landlocks our community. However, the good thing is, there's about 49% of the people who had forbearances that have either, 6% of those have paid off their house, which that's fantastic news. We just don't know what the rest of the 50% will end up doing to our market or what's going to happen to them. I know in 2020, there was about 21% increase in mortgage home loan applications, and in the beginning of this year to now, there's only 2%. So there's definitely a decline in people even interested in buying homes at this point. So where I'm leading, you, this has created a big push to builders, new development, land development, and new construction. But those construction homes are starting at $500,000. They're not spec homes anymore, they're custom. So with the prices of timber, which are artificially inflated right now, I think there's a lot of fear about Biden's administration with the conservation plan, rolling out with, you know, the Department of Interior with Deb Holland running it, just the focus is on preserving endangered species, preserving conservation of forestry management. So there's going to be a definite impact to changing building material, it's just about how. And so I think that definitely impacts what buyers can actually pay for. But my concern is the existing homeowners, the, the native Johnson Countyans, they're really going to be buying a home that's a fixer-upper at over $60,000. So they're going to need that money, that if we, I guess, old language, roll back the mill to a place where we're getting 25%, they're going to need that money to be able to make those repairs for that home that they overpaid by $60,000. So my concern is really about the people that have been here, the people who use us, who come here. I don't want them priced out of this area. I love the idea of a sale on tuition. I think that was something that was discussed a while ago, of just giving a boost of some type of incentive to come back to school. And I know the CARES Act, we can't solicit that, so that's been difficult, but I think when there's a sale, that's difficult for me to buy, I mean, not buy. So I think a sale on tuition has that, that understanding of, hey, let me go back and retrain, let me go back and, and pursue a, a bigger degree or a bigger certification, and I can get that raise at my, at my work. The dark store is interesting, because I think for cities, it will, it will affect them really bad. But as a county, if Miriam and Northeast Johnson County have an impact for dark store, and Olathe starts building out, we might benefit in Gardner or Edgerton or places that are developing. So as a county, I don't know necessarily if we're going to see the impact of dark store, but also the cost of homes, the Casey Star stated, the average is $500,000. So the increase in what we're going to get in valuation compared to any kind of impact for dark store, we may still come out ahead. So I don't necessarily see the concerns with dark store, but as it rolls out, you know, we're going to have to take notice and discuss that. The low enrollment is a big factor to me. I don't want to give the impression that typically, you know, with raises, there's a sense of security. And so there's the sense of, if there's something that we need to look at for the low amount of enrollment, I don't want to find out that down, you know, four months later, we have to do layoffs because we need to collapse some classes. And I think that can be difficult in departments, because you might have one department that doesn't necessarily have a lot of student enrollment while another one is packed. So, yeah, there's, I'm definitely in favor of 25% revenue to get back to So, yeah, there's, I'm definitely in favor of 25% revenue to get back to our policy. So, sorry for the long-winded thing, but just kind of wanted to show you my thoughts and how I got to 25%. I'm done.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. Rachel, I learn a tremendous amount each time, only my second year, so I feel like I gain a lot just from all that you have prepared and each year grow a deeper understanding of our budget. So I appreciate how detailed it is, because I really hope, especially with a newbie. So one of the benefits of being a lost people is almost everyone has asked my questions, except for two. So trustee Snyder and trustee Cook, thank you for taking my questions. My only remaining question was, the vacancy review committee, can you, that went by fast, and I was trying to understand how that fit in with what you were saying about how that affects the budget? Can you remind us again what the purpose of that committee is in terms of budget?
Sure, yeah. We're just trying to make sure that before, before positions are posted to be filled, that they receive appropriate scrutiny. And so we are looking in some level of detail at the activity level within the department before approving the request. And I think it goes along with some of the concerns around where are we at with enrollment, where are we at with, due to the pandemic, with just service levels on campus. Having that extra level of review by our committee is helping to ensure that our staffing levels are appropriate based on the level of activity.
Okay. Is that something you all plan to just, is a standing committee that will just remain intact?
I think so. I mean, we don't have any plans to sunset it. It seems to be working pretty well. Again, we have our new VP for HR on board now, and, and I think it's, I think it's working well. It's, it's serving a good purpose.
So would part of the purpose of that committee be, I think enrollment is what is the biggest factor that is just so a variable we just cannot predict. I, I echo the sentiments of several that have said, you know, this county in all indicators is really booming in, in people and homeownership, that people are, come to this county because it's attractive, certainly why my family moved here eight years ago. But we are, you know, we've got this little lapse in enrollment. And so I guess the question that I have is how that affects what you can calculate out for the biggest cost of our budget, which is our salaries and benefits. And if we go way up in enrollment, is this committee one of those kind of gateways where this committee, would it be expected to be able to say, yes, we can approve these at a faster rate than once or twice a year, as you were talking about? Or is that separate, and this is more about when we're losing positions, or we're needing to collapse classes or positions into one?
Yeah, I mean, I see the committee staying in place for the, for the foreseeable future. I mean, we don't have any plans to not do it once we get to a certain level of enrollment or anything. And, and again, I think because our staffing levels have remained relatively consistent regardless of enrollment, we could grow enrollment 2%, 3%, 4%, and probably not have to add to the staffing levels that we currently have. We've, we've maintained a lot of flexibility there so that, you know, I think we could, we could accommodate some of that growth with what we already have.
And it, and that would be accommodated in the budget we have proposed for next year?
Yes.
But it, but beyond 3% or 4%, then we would?
I don't know. I mean, I'd have to model that out, but I, it probably is, is more than that. I mean, you know, we haven't, we haven't adjusted that staffing table for quite some time. Now, not all the positions are filled, there, you know, there are a number that are budgeted and not filled at any given point in time. But they're within the budget and they're accessible to Dr. Cook's question, you know, if we need to act quickly on something like that, we have the flexibility to do so.
And I think trustee Smith Everett, from a, from a long-range standpoint, the risk you run in when things start to improve is you start to think, okay, well, now we've got this extra budget, what else can we do with this? And maybe we need to add positions, or we need to do this. And to me, having this team in place is, is a level of scrutiny of, of whether things are going up or down, we're being very thoughtful about this. And part of the reason to move to this, to the committee structure was that to engage cabinet and to wait for cabinet and for cabinet to work through these positions, it really is, you know, the, our key leadership roles from a finance standpoint, from an HR standpoint, from an executive leadership standpoint, being able to scrutinize quickly and make decisions that allow us to move forward efficiently, but also with some consistency, so that, you know, it's not, well, my pet project or your pet project, they're looking very, very seriously at, like, if we do this, there has to be a return for us from a college standpoint in how we serve students, how we serve our colleagues, how we serve the community, and not just filling a position because we've had it. So we leave a number of positions open for a significant amount of time.
And again, we're meeting weekly, so as not to slow things down.
Right.
Okay. That, that's the majority of my questions. The other big question I had, and I know we've talked, but just in terms of strategic plan and thinking what resources we need to allocate for that in this budget, and how, I was trying to think in my head the timeline of the two, when we do the approval process and our calendar for budget, as well as when we're looking at the strategic plan and moving from gathering information to really making some hard and fast goals that we're going to work towards and making sure that we can have flexibility for that.
Absolutely. So maybe just if I could to speak to that. So as Rachel said in her presentation, we've, we've set aside in the budget a half million dollar for strategic plan implementation. We believe that that should be adequate for the coming year as we move through, you know, asking you to consider a strategic plan in the month of June, or if we're not ready, the month of July. And then, and so by that point, we'll have to the strategy level of what are we trying to accomplish over the next two or three years? And then when we come back in the fall, then the deep dive into, so what does that mean for this coming year to 18 months? How do we make it actionable? And at that point then is where it begins to turn into, and here are the resource needs that we have. And so I anticipate that the half million should be enough for this year. The question will be beyond that, what are the strategic initiatives that take place with an intention of growing enrollment? And you grow enrollment with new students, and you grow enrollment with keeping your current students and bringing students back. And so as we improve student success, that will drive enrollment. In addition, you know, if we look at kind of those four buckets of goals, you know, on their student success side, there are many different initiatives that we could take. Some of them may be labor-intensive, may mean adding, may need a need for staff in order to carry that out. Others may be training, it may be, you know, developing clear pathways for students. And so that may not be, that may or may not have any position tied to it, but it may be time in order to make that happen. And so how do you level load resources out in order to make that happen? If we look at, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, the, the big question will be for this coming year is, is there an office? Is there a position or more in that? Do we have, when we think about DEI and how we approach it from a curricular standpoint or a pedagogy standpoint, classroom management, service to students, financial aid, and so forth, there, there will be resource needs there that we have not yet landed on, but I'm confident that in the, you know, the, the first several months of the year, we will really begin to nail that down and to be able to say, so here are exactly what the resource needs are as we move forward.
Mr. Chair. See if trustee Smith Everett's done yet.
That's it.
Firstly. Okay, trustee Cross.
Just three quick questions I meant to hit. I'm sorry, Rachel, I didn't get them. The 2% investment in other income, the $3 million roughly in the other income.
Mm-hmm.
What all is that exactly?
It's investment income on our reserves, which is significantly lower this year than it's been in the past, just because of the low rates that we're able to earn on our permitted investments. Community colleges are fairly limited in the state of Kansas on what kind of investments we can hold.
So if we lowered our reserves, that, that investment income would go down?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's how money works, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
There are some other things in other income, but that's the bulk of it.
Okay. And then Missouri, why is Missouri so far down on community college enrollment?
Are you looking? I really can't speak to that with any level of certainty. I'd have to.
It jumped out at me.
Some homework on that.
The CFI ratio, is that your, your data point, or are we borrowing that?
Yes.
You created that number.
Yes, our office did.
But it's based on a national, I think what he's asking is, where does that metrics
come from?
Uh, yes.
Right?
As far as how.
Yeah, I trust you.
Yeah, there are numbers, they're based on the college's audit, but as far as the ideal range and, you know, what the score tells you, that's based on a larger study, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I've got a few questions too, Rachel. I know you've been up there a long time, and it's.
That's okay.
We still have a regular meeting.
Sorry, I think I went over my time.
It's not your fault, it is not your fault. I think I ask this each year, do you have any information from the appraiser about what percentage of the increase in assessed valuation is new growth?
Yes, I have that in a different presentation, and I did not bring it.
Okay.
I'll get that too.
But my, I mean, part of the assessed valuation is we have new homes, we have new warehouses, we have new businesses, those are all new growth. So that, I always think that should be factored in, and I've always been comfortable at this college, taking, taking, keeping some of the assessed revenue growth because of the fact that I think we create that. Let's see, tuition consideration, I think those have been answered. I'm, I'm interested in the reserve level, because although this, for the fiscal year '22, we're at, you're estimating at 30% and the next year at 29%, it goes up in fiscal year '26 to 43% over about $75 million.
And so that's, that's after the science labs are completed.
Right.
But before any other new strategic priorities are in the hopper.
Right. And now, you anticipated my question.
Yeah.
$15 million next year for science labs.
$11 million.
$1 million next year, they're done.
Correct.
Those are, those are non-recurring expenses, as trustee Cook said, and we ought to spend those out of reserves.
Yes.
What other big, I mean, I remember science labs being brought up by Dr. Larson three or four years ago, saying, this is coming, folks, be, be prepared to spend money out of reserves on it. Once we spend those, then our reserves are projected, understanding it's a, it's your best estimate, to go to $75 million or 43%, which is well above our minimum guideline of 25%. So are there things on the horizon on non-recurring expenses like that that we should be aware of when we set reserve levels this year?
I mean, I think that's what our strategic planning process is going to tell us. I mean, we're, we're going to be doing a lot of that kind of work through this upcoming strategic planning process. From a facilities perspective, there are some other things associated with, you know, what we refer to as phase three of our facility master plan, so kind of that ongoing space management work, you know, relocating administrative offices. We'll need to repurpose the WLB building, for example. There are some things like that out there. There are some other needs within instruction that haven't really probably been very well prioritized or fleshed out yet. So there are some things. Again, I think the strategic planning process will help us to itemize those more, if you will, and then we'll get those baked into those longer-term financial projections.
I, I just haven't heard of those big numbers.
Yeah.
We had a big facilities master plan with a big number, and then we had science labs with a big number. I've always pressed for significant reserves and supported increasing our, our minimum policy guideline to 25%. But the trend I see tells me that we can, we ought to flatten that trend some, and, and I'm comfortable starting that this year. I appreciate the 1/10th of a mill levy recommendation. I'm, I'm, I think I'm with, with Mr. Snyder, that we can do more than that, given the reserve levels we have. Let's face it, we had a, it, it's amazing to think a year ago what we were saying in this, in this budget workshop. Financially, we've had a really good year. We're off on students. We aren't serving the students we wish we'd serve. But with the federal funding we've received, the strong support of taxpayers, and continued high assessed valuation in Johnson County, we've done well as a college. And so I'm interested in finding ways to roll back a little farther than a 10th of a mill. As to Senate Bill 13, it, that is a purely political bill. It would require us to vote, to raise property taxes by 6% just to get back to where we were this year, if it were implemented this year, so that somebody can say you raised property taxes by 6%. And that's what will start next year. And, and when it's, when you said the theme of it was transparency, this is transparency. Been transparency every year I've been on, well, not every year I've been on the board, but since about 2013. We show exactly how much new money we're taking, and we give options about whether we're going to take all of it, or part of it, or none of it. So I think our transparency has been pretty good over the years. I'm, I share the concern about enrollment. I mean, when you look at the enrollment chart, you see that we are about where we were 10 years ago in total number of students and in total credit hours, yet we're 40, $50 million more in general operating funds. And that's just not sustainable. We have got to do a better job, and it starts with the trustees, and it's the administration, and it's the faculty, and it's, everybody on this campus has got to find ways to get students from Johnson County. I loved your point, Jerry. I'll bet the population in Johnson County has doubled since 2001, and yet we're getting about the same number of students from Johnson County as, as a percentage of our student body. So we have to find a way to do a better job there, because it's not sustainable the other way. Other final comments, we're past about 5:30, but Jerry?
To answer your question, I have a question of Rachel. Big-ticket items that might come out of reserve. Rachel, when we have the opportunity to buy down debt, our bonding agent comes from time to time and said it would be in the college's best interest to buy down debt. Does that come out of reserve?
Um, yes. And it's funny.
That's an example, Greg, of a big item.
Usually a refinance.
Yeah, and it's funny that you bring that up, because we do currently have a little bit of revenue bond debt that's callable. And so we do have, this is something I've been talking to our financial advisors with Piper Jaffray about very recently, the opportunity to look into doing something like that. And that is a good example of.
Let me, what example? Coming up in reserve.
It's not a big number, but.
And I, I note that although we did a $50 million, we went into debt $50 million in a certificate of participation, like a bond, at 2.9.
9, 2.9%.
2.9?
Mm-hmm.
2.9%. So we're, it's, it's a good rate for capital structure, so, but it is a way that, I think, I think what we don't, we haven't focused on is the expense side of the budget nearly as much as we focus on the revenue side. And I think we're going to have to unless we can turn enrollment around. So trustee Cross.
I had one wise, a acre comment and one serious comment.
Will we be able to tell the difference?
Well, in terms of big projects, I remember Dr. Sobchak always talking about with some humor, the consistent and repeated brick repair projects we have. I don't know if that's what you meant, but you asked, we have big-ticket items coming up, and I'm like, other than brick repair? You know, I think, you know, 43% in, in reserve, or even 38% is trustee Lawson is focused on, I think that's probably too high, all candor. But I think that, you know, whatever Senate Bill 13 is, assuming it's constitutional, it puts us in a heck of a place, and it's going to make everything political anytime we want to do anything with the budget. I mean, that's the purpose of it. It's to drive Republican activism and attention to these low-level municipal races. And so maybe it's just my hyper partisan brain, I don't know, but I feel like it needs to be said, so I'm going to say it. Like, it's a partisan ploy, and I agree with trustee Musial that it's purely political. So, you know, our money is our strength. I mean, you might as well talk about it in Johnson County. Everybody else calls us rich. The, the entire time I've been on the board, there's been threats of statewide mill levies and everything else to, in a state that's supposedly full of conservatives, they want redistribution from Johnson County. And I don't disagree as a matter of policy, but I think it's always interesting when they go to vote on certain things like that in Topeka. So I think my overall point is, you know, you'd be wise to leave the money where it's at. The money is our strength, right? We make money off the money. I, I guess reducing it some level pursuant to our policies is a good idea. I'm not opposed to that, and I appreciate trustee Cook's role, and for all the disagreement I've had with him, I'm going to miss him because of his experience and realizing, not only might I, if the people have me again, move up a level in seniority, but we won't have trustee Cook and, and the brains and sensibility that he does bring. So, you know, I, I think if we're going into uncertain times, I'd rather have money with me than not. I mean, that's what Warren Buffett's doing right now. He's sitting on his cash at Berkshire Hathaway. And so I, before we start wheeling and dealing and burning and rolling back, like, I, I just beseech you to consider where we're at. Commercial real estate's going to Commercial real estate's going to take a hike, a hit, I mean, I hear it every day and um, people don't want to pay for, let me be quiet. I know clients that are reducing commercial real estate holdings and I think um, you're going to start rolling back at the wrong time. It's a rainy day fund and it's not raining yet, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee, I, I will make a comment, I, I don't want to turn this into a partisan thing, Lee, but, and I won't, but Warren Buffett made his money in the private capital market. We made our money by taxing our property taxpayers, who now pay for 67% of the college instead of 55% when I got on the board, so.
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that.
Trustee Lawson.
Uh, if we absorb the fees, so for tuition rate is 94 and the fees are 16, so that would leave us at $78 for credit hour. Is that something that the, the revenues could do?
Is that something that would?
Fees that the students pay?
Is that something that the trustees?
Reduce tuition by 16% basically.
Yes.
The revenues could do that.
$16, I mean.
Yes, every year through the budget process, the board sets the tuition and fee rates.
And that would inadvertently give us kind of that sale on tuition because instead of 94, it's 78, okay.
But again, those, those, that fee revenue money doesn't go into the general fund. You know, if, if it's the sustainability fee of a dollar, it's restricted for sustainability initiatives. If it's the student activity, $7 for credit hour, that's for student grants and student scholarships and student activities.
Right.
So that doesn't just go into the general fund, just.
Right, so that if the, if we absorb those, they would still be paid to those areas, just like a student fee would. I mean, you guys can figure that out, but I was just curious about that. Well, I don't, uh, coming back to the dark store and the commercial, I mean, I get a lot of international clients that are very interested in commercial transitional properties. We have this K-shaped economy where a lot of people who have, still have and have a lot. And they're very interested in warehouses or storage units, uh, mixed-use zoning, I think that's something that we could definitely do for luxury condos above businesses. I hear all the time from retired clients that don't want these big 6,000 square foot homes, but they want to be able to buy in the $1 million range and they don't, they want the lock-and-leave community of a luxury condo. So I, I don't see the concern about commercial, I see it booming and I see a lot of uh, money coming in, so. But yeah, if I, if, the, no fees, I, I mean, it's a small amount, but I think I could maybe see a difference in our low enrollment.
All right, we will come back in May with the management budget, I would encourage everybody to get more thoughts or questions to Rachel through Doc, through Dr. Bound between now and May. And we'll have, I assume we'll have someone who would update it to be the whole.
Yeah.
At the end of April. So that would be another good time, we have it, some, some further discussion about the budget. For purpose of the public, the May management budget does not lock us in, it is not the legal budget. It would cause some scrambling by administration if we totally undid it in August. But there are the opportunities for adjustments between May and August. It simply is something that is good for our faculty, good for our staff, if we uh, tell the administration in May, here's where, here's where we think we're headed, so. Any fa, closing comments, Dr. Bound?
I guess just a, a couple of thoughts, one, we, we've talked a lot about enrollment, you'll know in the budget, we put a 3% reduction. But we have set a goal, you have set a goal of a 1% increase uh, for this coming year. And so um, you always budget, my experience, budget conservative and outperform as opposed to budget for uh, revenue, uh, uh, enrollment increase and then if it didn't happen, now you've got a bigger problem to solve. And so you've, you've set the goal of a 1% enrollment, as I talk to the team, uh, they don't anticipate that we're going to see significant movement on that in the summer term. But for fall is where they expect to see that we have the opportunity for enrollment growth. Last summer, we had a very strong summer. And so um, there's some hesitancy around that of saying, we're going to see it already in summer, um, but we do anticipate the opportunities for fall and again for spring, so.
Can you remind us for spring, or sorry, for summer, are we um, increasing in-person for summer or was that not till fall?
Uh, we're increasing for fall, um, there will probably be some increase for summer, but summer is predominantly an online delivery um, as it is, generally, so, yeah, yeah. And then my last comment again is just, I want to echo the comments of appreciation to Rachel and team and to the cabinet and to our team across the college in helping us get to this point where we've got something to have good, healthy debate about. And uh, we're anxious to, to move forward and answer your questions as well as to prepare a budget that works for uh, for us as a college as well as our taxpayers, so, thank you.
Rachel, thanks.
Thank you all, we are scheduled to move right into the regular agenda and then take a break before our executive session, is everybody okay with that? If anybody needs to step out, obviously you don't need my permission to do so, but, but please move on to do that. Um, we're going to go ahead then and move into the, uh, let's see, awards and recognition section, Greg, you got to get that. Got it.
Yeah, hold. Terry, can you hear me? My, can you do me a huge favor, my, could you come in here for a quick second?
I can hear you, Andy.
Terry, can you come in real quick, please? Thank you.
Bear with us just a moment here. Oop, 20, please. Get your mask on, Terry. Terry, we're going to need you for a minute, so if you'd sit, take Nancy's chair there, if you would, please. Um, Trustee Smith Everett and Trustee Ingram have something today.
Thank you. Um, in recognition of April as Community College Month, the JCC board of trustees wishes to recognize Terry Schlitt, our Executive Assistant to the President and the Board of Trustees. For your tremendous professionalism, your dedication and your commitment to this board and to the college. Terry's institutional knowledge and loyalty to JCC over the past 17 and a half years continues to serve us well.
Terry leads a team which is instrumental in helping seven individually elected community members serve as trustees to work in collaboration with, on, and be, on behalf of this college. We thank her for her hard work and her leadership and the leadership that she provides in making our jobs easier and look forward to many years of continued partnership on our behalf. So Terry, we say thank you.
Thank you.
You must go to the podium. Thanks. You don't have to, you don't have to.
No, don't make it. So when she walked in, I said, you, you can kill me later.
Please, they have something to present to you.
This is a gift from the board to you and to your family and we hope you enjoy it and you enjoy the evening out on us.
Thank you so much. You're a very important person to work with, all of you, so, thank you.
You, you save us on another day, everyone, you make us look good, yes.
If there's somebody who likes to be behind the scenes, it is Terry, uh, but we couldn't do our job as trustees without her and we couldn't, I think Dr. Bound would agree and the rest of the executive leadership team. Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett and Trustee Ingram for uh, herding us cats to get that done. It was well-earned, well-deserved and uh, I know that Terry will continue to do great things for the college um, and the people of Johnson County.
Absolutely.
Now, Dr. Bound, I lied because I told you there were no other awards and recognitions, but I'm going to mention one about you. Dr. Bound started out as a, as a president here at Johnson County Community College last July 1 and he was recently recognized by the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society with the Paragon Presidents Award, which recognizes new college presidents for their outstanding support of student success. More than 500 college presidents across the country were eligible for the award and 22 were selected. Uh, the recipients were nominated by PTK students from their colleges, so he was dominated by Phi Theta Kappa students at Johnson County Community College. So I think it's important that we recognize that um, new college presidents were those three years and under. Um, in 10 months, you have had an impact on the Phi Theta Kappa students, uh, and I want to make sure we recognize you tonight for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, it's because of an outstanding Phi Theta Kappa chapter um, that uh, that the recognition has come my way and it really is because of the chapter and so thank you very much, though.
Again.
And thank you for hiring me because it wouldn't have happened anyway.
Well-earned, well-deserved again and if.
Thank you.
If Terry's going to kill you, you need to kill me first for bringing that up, I guess.
Thank you.
So we have it in the right sequence. Um, our open forum is the next item on the agenda, the open forum is a period during a regular, regularly scheduled uh, Community College Board of Trustees meetings when uh, citizens or anybody can address issues of concern at the college. For each session, there is up to five minutes per speaker and if there are multiple speakers, the chair has the authority to reduce that to three minutes. During our, uh, the COVID uh, Zoom sessions, you need to register by Wednesday at 5:00 PM on the day before the board meeting, um, and you can be registered. We have no registered speakers today, so we'll move on to board reports and first is Student Senate President Sailor Usher. Sailor, when you are elevated to speaker, please tell us what's going on with the Student Senate.
Hi, thanks.
Hi.
So we have big news, good news, um, the 2021 and 2022 Executive Board elections have just concluded and the Senator election's also concluded. And our new executive board is composed of President Shelby Winter, Vice President Asta Tapa, the Treasurer Camille Mullins, Mullings, and our Provenientarian Mahalat Malagida. And we're um, in the process of appointing a secretary now because we had some write-ins but no candidates. And also uh, re-elected Senator Jonathan Hahn, who's been with us, with us for a whole year. Um, also, what's going on is our Earth Week celebration is really kind of picking up some steam on getting involved, we've got quite a few people who've RSVP'd and we're in the process of uh, purchasing the care packages now, getting all that worked out. And our Treasurer Danielle has been doing a really good job posting a ton of uh, different things on our social medias about that to get the word out. What else? So the submissions, a couple of people have made videos talking about how they live sustainably, so we'll have an interesting award night on the 23rd. And yeah, I think that just about wraps it up, thanks for having me.
Sailor, let me ask you with, with the conclusion of the elections, when does your term end, does it go through May?
May 10th, I think we, we're going to have a transition ceremony.
Well, does that mean this is your final presentation to the Board of Trustees?
I, I guess so, I mean, I'll be at all the other meetings, I might not be able to speak though.
Well, I want to make sure that if, if this is your last presentation and opportunity that uh, the board officially thanks you uh, for another uh, trying year for the Student Senate President, as was last year because of the, the COVID impact. Um, we've really appreciated your um, support and activities uh, and reports to the board. If I remember right, you uh, spent some time on the Search Committee, am I remembering right? That you were on the Search Committee last year that led to Dr. Bound, so that was a, that was a major.
That's right.
No, he was not, it was a, okay.
He could have been.
But you, I know you put a lot of time in this and it's been challenging trying to organize people, make allocations, have elections, uh, when everything was remote. So we really want to thank you uh, for your effort and if any other trustees want to make, make a comment about that, recognizing this is your last opportunity, you can come back anytime and hopefully someday we'll be in person and you can come back and, and visit with us.
Thank you, it's been an honor.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Sailor, thank you so much for serving in your position during a year that you will be able to tell children, grandchildren, nieces or nephews, when you're an old person like the rest of us here on this board, that you were a Student Senate President during this crazy thing called COVID. And um, I really appreciate your um, enthusiasm, your optimism, um, your team's willingness to be really creative in really tough times and I think the students at JCC have benefited from that, so. Thanks for all of that, that energy is really critical, especially in a year so uncertain as this one, thank you.
On behalf of the board, Sailor, thank you. Stay in touch, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, thank you. Our next report is our college lobbyist, Doc, uh, Mr. Carter is not able to be with us today, you have his written report. If you have specific questions, I would, we can direct them to Dr. Bound now or Dr. Bound and Kate Allen, uh, following the meeting. Uh, the legislature has adjourned for its, to come back for the veto session when a lot of really important things happen. So uh, any specific questions anyone wants to address today? Trustee Lawson.
It's not just a question, it's more the Senate Bill 55 that I wanted clarification on, so that was to require the verification of athletes in a sport, specifically women, to be handled by gender, so my question is, of course, who is going to be handling this? Is this coaches or new employees? I can't even understand this one, uh, how could you even advertise a job that inspects genitals of young girls uh, to prove they're biological female? And I think this is just built to enable and pay for pedophiles, so I'm really disappointed in the State House, uh, I don't think this is helpful for Kansas at all. And I think it's going to have massive consequences and we can look back at the US gymnastics cases. So I just wanted to find out if he had any information about who will be handling the inspection of younger old genitals.
I will, I will get the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Other questions on the legislative?
What, what did Dr. Bound say?
He said he will, he will look into it and get back to it.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is the Faculty Association, I believe that is Dr. Leicher, our FA President. Good afternoon, Jim.
Good evening. Well, let me say that the recognition of Terry tonight was worth waiting through the hour and a half-long budget for twelve. So I'll add my congratulations to her as well, absolutely deserved. I have four items to cover and using the good news scale, I'll take them in descending order with the best news first. Last Saturday, Shree and I were two of several hundred employees who received our first vaccination shots through the college's plan with Avid Health. Susan McSpadden even managed to snap a few pictures of me in masked and pre-haircut mode while I was taking it in the arm. And like everywhere, there's been a lot of anxiety about a safe return to campus, so the college's announcement of a $250 stipend or an equivalent contribution to the meal share program has gone a long way to alleviate it. I know there've been concerns about the expense, but at they fully support this move and formally thanks Elisa Pacer, Leslie Harden, Andy Bound and everyone who made it work. This was a generous and innovative idea. I used exactly those words when I was interviewed by Fox 4 News last week. The request from Chris Gray that I speak to the media came during a pretty busy day of classwork and negotiations. Despite how much we've heard lately about how very important it is that we not venture far from the classroom, Faculty Association always makes time to do the institution itself when we believe it's warranted. Secondly, I'm hearing from folks in the Science Division who are quite enthusiastic about their pending new spaces. As you know, this is a big investment, the first phase of which, the renovation of physical science labs and chemical storage and prep areas in CLB is scheduled to start in August. There have always been restrictions on where and when professors can work with students on independent research. Students don't always have space to leave their unfinished work in a safe location for long periods and sometimes the lab technicians just get booted and have to go someplace else. Several faculty have been meeting with the architects to help design the new spaces which we think will allow for more sophisticated and collaborative projects. And in turn produce people who are better prepared to compete at four-year universities. That's just in case you're wondering what you're spending $15 million on. Regarding my third item, negotiations, I know the rules and I have no intention of bringing up specific matters under discussion, so I'll limit myself to general comments. They have been a bit of a bumpy ride, I'm sure everyone on the 10-person team, 11 counting the mediator, has experienced some frustration. That said, the conversation is more productive and less adversarial than in 2018. When I asserted last, what I asserted last month still stands, we've seen nothing so. We've seen nothing so far that undermines our commitment to the IVV process. Part of the frustration is due to the delay in addressing economic questions. Normally during a contract year, a salary study preparing us to peer institutions would be completed by December or January, in order for all sides to process the findings ahead of negotiations, which typically start in March. My team lobbied hard for that timeline last fall. Instead, the study was not commissioned until January, I believe, maybe even later, with a completion date of March 15. Now we're a month in, and the salary report is several weeks overdue. I know there are people working on it, but not having that data out at the outset has been a challenge. Of course, the other unique feature about this negotiation is that it's virtual. Thanks to our tech support staff, guys like Adrian and Derek, who are probably capping my name right now, and who I'm convinced have become the most important people on campus this last year. The links for public viewing of negotiations have been on the college website, and I've been sharing those on our FA list. In a conventional face-to-face setting, not counting the support teams, we might get five or six observers on a good day. Virtually, we've been averaging about twice that, and on some days, almost two dozen. Not just FA members, but staff, deans, and people from the community. I've had to remind folks, especially myself, that negotiations are not a talent call. Not everybody gets to speak, but they are public. What's said there is being watched, being talked about, and it's being remembered. Finally, the testing center. Since my colleagues Dave Krug and Brenda Edman spoke to you last month, a special task force was established under the academic France Council. I wasn't present for the three meetings of that group, but I'm told that their first two went reasonably well, despite confusion as to their actual charge. Faculty reps were under the impression that the task was to look at how testing center resources could be leveraged to support academic progress. At their third and final meeting last Thursday, administration clarified the charge more narrowly, that is, to help the center provide two exams per hybrid class, as previously suggested. Since the task force's scope addressed none of the concerns raised, it was agreed that further meetings serve no purpose. At least one colleague, whom I would say lacks the deep investment, as those you heard from in March, called this, and I quote, "A waste of time." If you need an optimistic spin, I'll give you one. Both sides now seem to understand how irreconcilable their positions are, and we can at least proceed with honesty. Out of respect for the ABC, I've tried to keep the faculty association on the sidelines over this, which is why I encourage inviting leaders of that group to speak here if you intend to ask more questions. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Jim. Questions for Dr. Leicher?
I have one. Dr. Leicher, would you be able to provide the comments you just read to us in written form? Your audio was a little distorted at times, and I wanted to make sure I clearly understood some of the points that I was trying to tune most closely into.
My apologies for that. Yeah, I don't know what's happening with this internet service. I can provide written comments of tonight's report to the entire board, if that's your wish.
If you'd submit those to Terry Schlisch or Dr. Bound, then he'll get them out to us, Jim. And Laura was right, it was a little difficult. There's just something a little bit off on your audio.
Okay, my apologies.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Johnson County Education Research Triangle trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything new to report from the last several meetings where I've reported there's nothing to report. We do meet April 19th at K-State LaLitha and by video conference, so revenues continue to be up, and that's all I have.
Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, our liaison and the president of KACC, trustee Ingram.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. It's also a very short report. We have our next meeting on June 5th. The intention is that it is virtual, and I think we're going to begin the discussions. I think I've shared with everyone that the executive officers have one monthly phone call that will be a week from Monday. We are anticipating trying to walk forward and figure out how we can begin to meet together, but I imagine that that will probably not be until the fall. We did... we are working on an evaluation for our executive director. We sent the evaluation out this past Monday. That evaluation is to be completed by the trustee liaisons from the respective community colleges, along with their presidents. And other than that, our Friday calls have continued. We did not meet this last Friday, so I'm going to ask Dr. Bound if he has any comments. There was a council of presidents meeting, and just thought maybe he wanted to provide a short update.
You want to address that now, or in your...
Sure, I'm happy to address it now.
Okay, great.
So the presidents meet on a quarterly basis. The goal is eventually we'll be back face-to-face. We've done face-to-face now twice, where we've had 16 or 17 of the 19 presidents present. And so the topics range from a variety of things. When we gather next, a primary topic will be related to DEI, specifically when we think about discussions that are taking place at K-Bor, and the connection that that will eventually turn into performance requirements for us. What does that mean for us? So we are, in some ways, well-positioned to move forward with that and to, together, K-Bor identify metrics that make sense from a DEI standpoint. But anyways, as we move forward to that, much of the conversation continues to be around COVID and a variety of other topics, but that... the big one as we move forward will be heavily around DEI, and where we have shared opportunities. I mean, even having conversations about curricular alignments, and how do we work together, and so forth, so.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing that I would mention, as Laura mentioned earlier in our presentation of award to Terry Schliss, this is community college month. So it's just a reminder of the importance of community colleges and the effect that we have in our various communities and our participation in the recovery from COVID. So that concludes my report.
Yeah. That probably explains why we're putting in so many extra meetings in April, because it's community college month. Thank you. Questions or comments about KACC?
That's it.
Foundation report, trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The foundation executive committee met on Tuesday, March 23 via Zoom. The committee reviewed a slate of director nominees that will be sent on to the full board of the foundation. Dr. Bound provided an update on the college, and Kate Allen provided an update on institutional advancement. The next foundation board of directors meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 21 via Zoom. The next foundation investment committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 27 via Zoom. Once again, like last year, the foundation will hold its annual luncheon virtually. This event will occur on Tuesday, May 18 at noon via live on YouTube. More details will be sent to you, and of course, all trustees are invited to participate. Many people are anxious to know about the plans for some enchanted evening. This is the signature scholarship gala that was transformed in 2020 with great success. The committee that's establishing the evening is having their first meeting tonight, so I'll have more details next month. But do want to mention that the chairs this year will be Chris and Lindsay Gerlock, and while many details are still being developed, they do have a commitment to hold some sort of event in person, but there will be virtual opportunities to accommodate any in-person attendance limitations or people that just don't feel comfortable attending in person. Some more details will be announced, as we have them in the coming months, but I know everyone's excited and just be thinking about whether your fancy clothes will fit 18 months into COVID. Thank you.
Not so much. Or what shopping opportunities?
Right.
Thanks for the reminder.
Thank you, Paul. The next item, we'll move to committee reports and recommendations. Collegial steering, we met a week ago Tuesday, I believe, and spent the hour, really at the suggestion of Dr. Leicher, and identified Senate Bill 40, which was the amendment to the Kansas Emergency Management Act, and Senate Bill 13 as items of interest to the faculty that they don't always see the entire legislative report we have or get it in writing. So we discussed both of those and the impact they may have on the college going forward. We've talked a lot about Senate Bill 13, the property tax bill, but Senate Bill 40 is the one that allowed individuals to approach their governing bodies, be it a citizen of a city, or a student or employee of the college, or a student or employee or faculty member or teacher at a K-12 district, and get a hearing within three days, a decision within seven days of that, an appeal to district court within 30 days of that, a hearing in the court within 72 hours, and then a decision within seven days following that. I don't want to jinx us, but we haven't had any challenges to our on-campus policies on social distancing and masking. School districts have, so we talked quite a bit about that and the impact that could have. The Kansas Supreme Court has clarified some through its rulings, and if we had a report, we would have to have a full board, at least a quorum of the board, four people participate in a hearing ourselves, not through a hearing officer, within 72 hours. And if anybody wants to hear my positions on the absurdity of that legislation, I'd be happy to share it after the meeting, but we talked about it at length. We also talked about the fact that next year, whoever is chair of this board and will be on collegial steering, would have a meeting dedicated to legislative issues, maybe in February or March, so that the faculty association and the administration, everybody could have more of a discussion about what legislatively might affect us as a college, because we don't do that at this point, and it was pointed out that that probably would be a good idea. Committee of the whole meeting, we held our first committee of the whole at the end of March.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the college.
Trustee Lawson.
So the hearings, it's my understanding that the intent for it was for any complaint to be brought to us, and it also limits the ability to... for us to give it to a third party. Is it just COVID, or is it any hearing? Does it have any movement to make it outside of COVID?
No, right now, it is... it only applies to the current emergency declaration, which is supposed to expire May 31, May 28. It is somewhat unclear whether it was intended to apply to only new orders after it passed, or old orders that were already in place. All the school districts have been treating it as if it applied to old orders as well, and have held... several have held hearings. I don't know... I haven't heard of anybody appealing the decision to the district court, because I'm not sure I've heard that any school district has yet expanded their seven-day period to rule.
I haven't.
But, you know, it is a limited scope right now. What troubles me is that the legislature now feels like it can put any grievance in front of every board within 72 hours and give them priority in the court system over criminal defendants, divorces, auto accidents, medical malpractice, whatever. So I think it's... I think that's why I think it's a dangerous precedent, but I think we have done a good job in addressing COVID on campus and our return to campus, and I think people have accepted that that's for the common good, and so hopefully we will not have to worry about that. But it's put you on notice that if we think we have trouble finding special meeting times for our executive sessions, we would have to find ways to do that within 72 hours of a complaint. Other questions on the legislative part? Please, sir. Committee of the whole, we had our first one, and for those members of the public, again, we used to operate with four standing committees, audit, learning quality, human resources, and management. We have consolidated those into one monthly committee of the whole meeting. Our first one was a little bit light on the agenda, but allowed us to have more discussion, I think, on the policy goals that we wanted to focus on. We reviewed the disposition of surplus property policy, received the single-source purchase report, where we are purchasing items for the college from a single source without competitive bidding. We looked at a summary of bid renewals over $50,000. We had a report and presentation on the COVID vaccine incentive program that Dr. Leicher mentioned, and how those funds would be used, the fact that they came from insurance, health insurance rebate, and were not new expenditures of new general fund dollars, and the opportunity to donate those back to the Johnson County Community College Meal Share Program and others. And I hope we see a significant amount of that donated back. I think that would be a great tribute to the employees of the college. We looked at the strategic plan draft goal review with John Clayton, and then we talked about Senate Bill 13 and Senate Bill 40. So you were all there. Do you have anything to add about those? The only items that required action are included in our consent agenda today. So questions or comments? Then we will move on to the treasurer's report. Trustee Cross, our treasurer.
Mr. Chair, I have not logged on to our website. JCC emailed eight years. I struggled with the new SharePoint thing.
Right.
I don't know if I publicly...
You want to save that for a minute?
I've got it here now.
Okay.
Rachel emails it to me. I'm a dinosaur.
Okay, you're all right.
The treasurer's report, Mr. Chair, can be found in the board packet. Board packet includes the treasurer's report for the month ended February 28, 2021. Some items of note include page one is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. February was the eighth month of the college's 2021 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $114 million, as is February 28, 2021. An ad valorem tax distribution of $3.5 million was received in March and will be included in next month's report. The expenditures in the primary operating funds, Mr. Chair, are within the approved budgetary limits, and so it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of this college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended February 28, 2021, subject to audit, an ISO move.
Second. Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Snyder to approve the treasurer's report for the month ending February 28, 2021, subject to audit. Any discussion or questions? Trustee Lawson.
I think in the back of our budget workshop that's going to be online had a nice index of all the codes, is that correct, for the cash disbursement summary? I think that's in our consent agenda, so I can talk about that there, but I think it's relevant to the financials. I feel like there was this page, yeah, 69, also 59, there seems to be, yeah, account codes. Is that connected, Dr. Bound? So if I wanted to look up there, it's all here, so if anybody from the public wanted to know about the control numbers, they can find them here.
I think the answer to that is yes, but let me... I will get an answer to that question.
Yeah. That's the only question I have.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the treasurer's report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. That motion carries 6-0. Trustee Ingram having stepped out for a moment. All right, Dr. Bound, we're doing your monthly report.
All right, well, thank you very much. I will keep my report relatively concise, but I've got a number of things that we want to talk about tonight as a part of my report. First of all, we will talk about... there we go, the college update. We will talk about... actually, I'm going to flip the order here. We're going to talk about continuing education and CARES funding. Then I will do a college update very quickly, as part of that, talk about the May retreat. And then for me, what's always the highlight of my report now is the student, and so we'll have a student to introduce you to here shortly. In doing that, I'd like to now invite Alisa Waldman, who's serving as our interim vice president for continuing education, to talk about the opportunities that we have. So we will do a deeper dive in a couple months on CARES funding and how we're using it and so forth, but I wanted you to know what's happening, particularly from a workforce development standpoint. And so with that, Alisa?
Thank you, Dr. Bound. I'm going to share my screen quickly. Hey, wonderful. So thank you to the board for just a few minutes to educate you and update you on some exciting opportunities for continuing education students. We have always made an effort to provide channels and avenues for continuing education students to find training support in the form of scholarships and other funding opportunities, but it's always a challenge. Currently, we have scholarships that are available through continuing education that are funded by the JCC Foundation and some private donors. We also work closely with Johnson County, and we currently have some of their CARES Act dollars that we have been able to work in... Act dollars that we have been able to work in collaboration with Workforce Partnership to offer to our continuing education students. But what I really would like to share with you is a new opportunity we have, which we are calling CE Training Awards. And as I know you're all aware, we have had several rounds of CARES Act funding that the college has been able to take advantage of and benefit our students with. Unfortunately, until very recently, none of that funding included continuing education. The Act mentions workforce development, but the interpretation only extended that support to credit students. And on March 19, we received clarification from the Education Department, which has really been a game changer. And that clarification is at the bottom of this screen, and it reads, "Funds can be used for grants to non-degree-seeking, non-credit, dual enrollment, and continuing education students." So with Rachel's help, we have jumped on this new interpretation, and we're very excited that we have created what we call the CE Training Award, which is funding that Johnson County Community College is able to direct to our continuing education students. So as with all of our funds and support that we have for students in continuing education, our primary goals are to serve the unemployed individuals in securing employment, as well as underemployed individuals in securing increased salaries and promotions. We are also able to provide training to businesses that have been impacted by the pandemic, so that those businesses can upscale existing employees and help in their recovery from the impact of the pandemic. And of course, regardless of the funding source, our goal is always to eliminate cost as a barrier to accessing the continuing education needed to gain employment and upscale the workforce. But I was delighted by the comments of trustee Lawson and trustee Ingram earlier, because this is one opportunity to really provide the support that our community and our workforce need to be able to recover from the pandemic and hopefully go beyond recovery into, you know, very sustainable jobs that they're well-suited and well-trained for. For the CE Training Award, the funding partners are the U.S. Department of Education, so the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, and then we've also partnered with the Kansas Small Business Development Center, so the state SBDC in Kansas has offered and provided funds to match our CE Training Awards for specific courses that their SBDC clients are registering for. A little bit of detail about eligibility for this training award opportunity. As I said, both individuals are eligible as well as businesses. The process is very simple. Some of the challenges we have run into with other funding opportunities are that they are bureaucratic and very challenging for the individual and very time-consuming for the business to take advantage of. And we've gone out of our way to try to complete our due diligence and vet appropriately, but also make this something that is easily accessible and available to people. So individuals need to be unemployed or have a FAFSA EFC of $14,000 or lower. So one of those two qualifies them, as well as they must be eligible to work in the United States and be a resident of Kansas or Missouri. So fairly straightforward. An individual can take advantage of up to $10,000 of courses per year, and that is very impactful. We can help people change their career and reskill quite easily for $10,000 a year or less. Businesses must demonstrate impact from COVID-19. So examples of that are acceptance of a PPP loan, an EIDL loan, demonstrating that they have had employee layoffs or furloughs, a revenue decline of at least 20%, or if they previously been approved by the JOCO Works Program, which is that program that we're also participating in with Johnson County. And businesses are eligible to register for up to $25,000 of courses per year. So some of the outreach efforts that we are embarking upon, we are reaching out to industry leaders and influencers who are in touch with workforce needs, our existing and past continuing ed students and our business clients, our JCC C credit students, of course, professionals in the area who are in touch with what their clients are experiencing, both individually and in business, so our bankers, our accountants, and many others. Workforce Partnership is a wonderful partner of ours, and of course, they connect us with the unemployed and those who are seeking career changes. We are making a special effort to reach out and connect with some social service agencies. We would really like to use some of this funding to serve those who are traditionally underserved. For example, previously incarcerated individuals, individuals who are leaving the foster care system, so those 18- to 23-year-olds that are sort of in limbo a little bit, and we can help them get some career skills, our ESL learners, the list goes on and on, job clubs as well. I do want to reiterate, and I believe it was trustee Lawson who said this earlier, we are not using this as a recruitment tool. We really want to make sure that this opportunity is available to those who are motivated and interested and researching how to learn these skills. We would greatly appreciate your assistance in sharing this information. That's one of the reasons that I think Dr. Bound was interested in having me present, because we really want you all to be knowledgeable and able to share this opportunity. It is really one that we have never experienced before, and we are so excited about. Quickly, a few outcomes. Now, these outcomes are actually from some of the funding we were able to guide students toward before the change that included the training awards we're now talking about. So this is work with CARES Act dollars through the county. But from October of 2020 through January of this year, our continuing education branch assisted 88 job seekers in registering for 490 courses. That is a value of approximately $350,000 of courses. We also assisted 20 businesses in training 529 employees, again, about $250,000 of courses. And if you're interested, I think it's fascinating to see which courses the workforce is asking for and where they're training. So the breakdown is roughly 40% have signed up for courses and registered for courses that involve business and leadership, 40% are computer applications and IT, and about 20% are other program areas, so commercial driving, health and human services, lots of other opportunities as well, but that 40-40 split is pretty interesting. A couple of, you know, the metrics and the numbers tell a story, but I always feel like hearing the testimonials from those who've been able to take advantage really explained the impact we've made, so I have just a couple of those to share with you. One spouse wrote an email to me, and in it she said, "I have not seen my husband this excited or smiling in a long time. He got approved for classes through the CE Training Award and is so happy and hopeful. He has created a spreadsheet of all the possibilities and when classes are meeting and how they can help. Seriously, thank you." And another is a student who all of us in continuing ed have gotten to know very well over the past few months, actually over the past year. His name is Steve. He was laid off from his accounting job of over 20 years due to COVID. He did not, he does not have a college degree. So he found himself, you know, experienced but without the qualifications that, you know, were required on paper. And he contacted one of our program directors and explained that he was looking for some sort of credential that would underscore his years of experience, so he could stand out and obviously get employment. He not only completed our business accounting certificate, which was right up his alley, but he also completed the Lean Six Sigma Green Belt course. He is now gainfully employed at a respected financial firm, and he has stayed in touch with us. In fact, he recently shared that the firm that hired him was impressed that during his downtime, he had pursued such excellent educational opportunities, particularly that he was familiar with the processes of Lean and Six Sigma, because that set him apart from the other candidates, which is exactly what we are hoping these funds will do. So that is a brief overview. We have a flyer, and Terry has that flyer and can share it with all of you, that sort of summarizes the qualifications and the opportunity. We also have an email, cecares@jcc.edu, or our registration number is always available for questions, and I would be delighted to answer any questions you all might have at the moment.
Trustee Cook, and then trustee Lawson, and then trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alisa, thank you for your great report. You indicated that there is eligibility for previously incarcerated. You're getting tired of me asking this, but how about those that are currently incarcerated?
If they are in a situation where they are able to be released for work, then I believe so. The eligibility is simply that they are not currently employed.
And I appreciate the effort for those out of foster care. I think we're talking about an age category here, and not because there's no foster home to find them, but are we talking about over 18 years of age?
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
They've been released from the formal foster care system, but they certainly need skills so that they can support themselves and find sustainable jobs.
Thank you very much.
Alisa, this, it's hard to talk.
Would you like us to come back to you, trustee Lawson?
No, I'm just so grateful. When I saw the line about the foster care kids and the incarcerated, sorry, thank you.
Alisa, I think you can hear that, Alisa, but foster care kids and recently incarcerated are important topics to trustee Lawson, so trustee Ingram?
We could not be more excited about this opportunity. Our team has been going gangbusters with it, because it's just never, it's never been something that we had available to us before to offer. So I appreciate your sentiments about it, trustee Lawson.
I do have one question as I compose myself, thank you. When you mentioned the revenue decline as part of a qualifier for the 20%, is that gross? Is that net income? And is that quarterly or annually?
So, that is an excellent question. We are trying to base it off of the same evaluation that Workforce Partnership has already established, and it can be as low as quarterly, but without currently seeing an increase. So if somebody told us that from March, and, you know, from a year ago, they had revenue losses, but we've seen an increase in their revenue since then, they would likely not qualify. That is, it's an excellent question. That is a case-by-case scenario. We've actually also, not for our CE Training Funds, but with workforce, we've even had businesses that have had the opposite. They have started manufacturing in order to contribute to COVID recovery, and they have had such an influx of revenue as well as employees that they need quality control and training and assistance. So it is a case-by-case analysis.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Trustee Ingram, and then trustee Smith.
Yes, Alisa, thank you so much. Your enthusiasm and your leadership will make this a huge success for all of us, I'm quite sure. I did have a question about the incarcerated, so thank you, Dr. Cook, for asking that one. I can think of several people that come to mind. Can we go ahead and send you names and contact information of people who might more broadly be able to assist you in reaching out, or do you want us, how can we help?
You can send them to me. I would be delighted to make that connection from that point on. You are welcome to give them as much of the information as you'd like, but we actually have one coordinator who is dedicated full-time to managing this process.
Okay.
And you've been doing an amazing job, but absolutely, please forward any connections to me. We would love to reach out, whether it's an individual, an agency, a business. We, you know, that's our, our hope is to reach as many people as we can.
Okay, and how else, how otherwise is this being marketed? I mean, are we sending, is it on our website, I'm assuming, and what other kinds of things? I see advertisements periodically on the TV. Is this included?
So, it is on our website. We're updating that language right now, actually. This is very fresh. We've just been at it for a couple of weeks, but yes, we do have the opportunity on our website. Beyond that, we're really, as I said, we're not marketing it or advertising it. What we're specifically not able to do is use these funds to promote the opportunity. It is not to be a recruitment tool. So we are truly trying to get to people like all of you who have their pulse on the community and can inform businesses, agencies of the opportunity, and then help those people.
I'm sorry you had to clarify that. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Laura?
Yes, Alisa, if we could take your enthusiasm and excitement and bottle it up, we could use that everywhere on campus. I just so appreciate your incredible excitement and positivity, because it is the beginning of what will be really successful endeavor. I'm going to be that person who asks if we can, if there is a way to measure or a metric where we can see how many people of color we're serving through this initiative, as well as how many people without a high school degree, or just, sorry, with just a high school degree. And the reason I ask is NPR last week did a fairly lengthy segment on who's really been affected by COVID, and I think it's important for us, particularly if we're thinking about DEI initiatives, which I know we're not there yet, but, you know, we're on the road, is are we getting to people that have been really the most affected? And NPR identified, the Department of Labor has indicated it's people of color and people with only a high school education. With that said, I owe, I take your plea seriously, and I will do my part. I wanted to confirm it's okay to publicize this on my trustee's social media accounts and to, because I think social media is a really easy, zero-expense way to get the word out, and people can share it, and then it becomes other people sharing, which broadens the outreach. Is that okay?
Yes, it is. And we do have a vetting process in place, so, you know, we truly are, there's a step beyond just asking for the assistance, so that we are ensuring that, you know, people who are in need of this assistance are the ones getting it.
Yeah.
To your previous question, we have also asked of anyone who benefits from this that they complete some exit surveys, as well as possibly surveys throughout their courses, where, you know, we are planning on tracking their, you know, their completion, if they have secured a job or improved, an improved job, an enhanced job because of it. We can certainly visit some of those other questions that you're asking as well. I think all of those tell the story of how this money is impacting individuals and businesses and the recovery in general, so I appreciate those suggestions.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. My last question, I don't know if it's a question as much as a hypothetical maybe. I would be remiss if I did not ask about restaurant owners who, I have family connections to culinary, which most on the board know, but it's really in those circles, they're talking about the devastation to small-business restaurant owners. Is this, can this initiative play a role in helping people who are small-business owners, specifically in the restaurant industry? I'm thinking of when I share this, this will go far in that particular network of people.
Yes. So one thing I would like to explain is that when a business owner or an individual expresses interest, we are delighted to connect them with our program areas that they're most interested in, and then have some guidance as to what classes would benefit them the most. So we, you know, while we have some culinary classes So we, you know, while we have some culinary classes on the continuing ed side, not as many that are direct culinary, but for example, we have a program, and many of you are familiar with it, called Living as a Leader. And, you know, so many of us at the college have been through that program, including Trustee Ingram. That's a perfect example of an opportunity that we can offer to any business owner, especially restaurant business owners, and they might be able to put their manager in it, you know, staff that they want to train for future opportunities so that they learn leadership skills. There are all sorts of customer service classes available. So absolutely, and I would just say, you know, that's where, once we get involved and you refer them to us, we'll really take some time and guide them to explore everything that's available to them.
You all are amazing. You're awesome. Thank you so much. Dr. Bound, can we get a copy of that last slide with the contact information?
Absolutely. We can get you the slide back. And Alyssa, can we, can you send to Teri the digital copy of the flyer?
Yes, I did that right before the board meeting, so she's got it.
All right, she's got it, and it's coming your way.
Yeah.
Super. Alyssa, thank you very much.
Another question, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
First, Alyssa, do you know what the question's going to be, so you've already sent the email?
No, I don't. Now I'm intrigued.
Everybody else commented. I agree and thank everyone for their participation. Things just move one seventh to one third faster if I don't talk, so I just want to say I agree with everything being said and thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Thank you, Alyssa.
All right, I'll continue my report, and I'll try to move quickly. So there are a number of things I just want to quickly update you on, and this is not just for you as trustees, but it's for the listening audience. We have so much to celebrate and be proud of as a college. Our debate team with our coaches, Justin Stanley and Matt Vega, and with a team of twin brothers, Travis and Thomas Babcock, competed in the National Debate Tournament and placed highest in the nation among community colleges and 36th overall in the nation, beating many of our well-known four-year partners across the country, of which I will not shame them by how talented our team is. Pardon?
Sorry.
Following that with our Model United Nations teams. And again, this is, Brian Wright is our coach, and they just, this past week, received recognition as outstanding position paper for the 2021 National Model UN Conference and their, their paper on New Zealand. I'm going to switch now and talk a little bit about athletics because there are a number of things that are, I started with academics because that's who we are, but we are also actively engaged with our students around athletics. And so our Golden Girls Dance Team, last week finished second in the nation in hip hop, third in the nation in jazz. Our volleyball team, and Amy Sellers is the coach, Jennifer I is our volleyball coach, as we speak, they have just started to play in the national championship game against Parkland Community College. And so we are incredibly pleased for them. Our women's basketball team under the coaching of Ben Conrad, they're in the national tournament next week, playing for, will be among the 16 teams working their way towards the number one team in the nation. Same with the men's basketball team. They, under Rand Chapel, our new coach, first year coach, they are also on their way to the national championship. Equally important to all of this excellence that's happening with these teams that are competing now at the national level, I could talk about the teams that aren't competing yet at national level, these are teams that are, and you know this as trustees, but to you, our faculty, our staff and community, you need to know that our student athletes are some of the finest students we have on our college campus. Seventy percent of our students, of our student athletes, received academic honors this year for their pursuit of excellence as students while also being athletes. And so I just think that is certainly recognition worthy, and that goes to the departments across our college who support students and our coaches' commitment to making sure that our students, athletes, are students first and then athletes. And so recognition to them. Commencement is just around the corner for us. May 21st is our virtual commencement. We also have a variety of pinning and program graduation ceremonies. If you haven't let Teri know which ones you want to go to or would like to go to, as we try to figure out how to coordinate that in limited numbers that can attend so that our graduates can celebrate, please let Teri know if you could by tomorrow. And so now let me talk very quickly about testing. And you heard a few minutes ago from Dr. Liker, he is absolutely correct, progress has slowed. And I've talked to, in our ones, one-on-ones, I was able to talk to many of you, but not all of you this week. So you know, Doctors McLeod and Dr. Weber, and I met with our ABC co-chairs, Heather Seitz, Tanya Hughes, and Dennis Arjo, to talk about the progress that's taking place and to support them and frankly, the frustrations that they're feeling as they work through our shared governance process. Our primary purpose in this is understanding, but also reinforcing our commitment to shared governance. And so there are a number of factors at play, right? And you've heard, you've heard about this from previous discussions with you, emails and so forth that you receive, what's at play, our course modality definitions. And particularly of interest are the definitions around online courses, which by definition are entirely online. You don't have to come to campus for anything. But there's an effort to change that definition that frankly is putting Dr. McLeod in a tough spot, and that is to expand a definition of online classes that allows for faculty and members to, to require students to come to campus for testing and so forth. And so by the very nature, that puts it into the definition, our operating definitions of a hybrid course. And so it creates tremendous confusion for our students. And I, and just so you know, I support the concerns that Dr. McLeod is raising because I think it makes it very confusing for students in what they're signing up for, and we need to bring clarity. Related to this is really understanding the magnitude of the need for in-person test proctoring, right? You've heard that in our discussions. Part of that is understanding what is the demand. We know that there's X amount of resources within the testing center. The testing center has said, we will continue to find ways to support you, but we need to know what the demand, if you will, is. If you talk about supply and demand, what's the need from a faculty standpoint? And so one of the things that I've communicated back to ABC leadership is, look, we just need to get the data because data should inform us in this process. How many courses are we talking about? What faculty members? How many tests or services are they needing from the testing center? How much time is allocated to that? What is the time of the semester that you need that? When you do that, you can level load and you can figure out, how can we accommodate as much of that need as reasonably possible? And then with that, you understand what's the gap above it, beyond what the testing center can provide, and you can solve for that problem. And so without good clarity around that, we're chasing a problem with solutions when we haven't fully identified the problem. And then, you know, with remote test proctoring, they have landed on three tools. Is that one? No, that's not one. Would I prefer one because I think that's in the best experience for students? No, it's not one, but three is better than a countless number that we've had before, and the team believes that they can accommodate that. And then understanding beyond that, what are the options in meeting the needs? So these are the things that are at play and that need to be addressed. ABC is convening, as they've expressed to me, meaning Heather, Tanya, and Dennis, convening a group of faculty, continue this conversation. So why may not be this broader team? Again, it's, it's ABC doing the shared governance work that we've asked them to do. My request of you is if you have folks coming to you saying, hey, we need you to, can you step in? Can you help us out? Can you hear us out? Please refer them back to ABC and let ABC do their job. My concern is if we don't do this, and they understand the emphasis on, we've got to move this forward. If we do anything other than allow ABC to do the work that they've been tasked with doing, we will undermine shared governance, and not just for the sake of ABC, but our sake of shared governance in general. So that's, that's my pitch and plea to you there.
Dr. Bound?
Yeah.
Do you know whether the ABC has considered getting student perspectives involved in this conversation? It seems like everything that you're mentioning is going to directly affect students and if they're wrestling with what administrators think is one thing and what, you know, faculty.
Right.
I just. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head, and I'm not going to speculate.
And I don't know the way you would incorporate them necessarily, but I think you would get a lot of valuable insights.
Yep, I understand. Yes. And again, so they're working through all this, the timeline that they've been working on is implementation for spring of '22. So when we talk about the urgency about this, they're really talking about spring of '22. And the big question is, if there's a belief that this will impact enrollment negatively, we're going to see that. On the other hand, if we move more and more towards a physically present campus, does the demand go down and does the problem solve at least to an extent itself? So the team is moving forward. I told you I'd keep you up to date on this. Many of us have had the one-on-one conversations, but I want to be straightforward with where we're at while encouraging ABC to move it and move it as quickly as they can, but to do it in a way that honors our students, that honors the testing center and the work that they're trying to do to support the needs, and it honors the needs from a faculty standpoint. So I bring that to you as information. The last thing I had on, second last thing I had on my agenda, the staff council, shared governance for the staff side of our employee groups, they have brought forward a recommendation for a staff council model. And so very pleased with the work that they've done, and I look to Liz Loomis and Debbie Rulo and the team from across the college that have done this, have put together, I think, a pretty good plan. They've got a little bit more work to do on it, but their goal would be to have elections so that people can begin, and they can begin that work in July. That is the next important piece in developing the broader college council. So I just, kudos and thanks to the team that's been working on that. And before we introduce our fantastic student here in just a second, I would, whoop, I just stole all the fun there, didn't I? Our retreat is scheduled for May 22nd, the morning of May 22nd. Our focus that day will be on the strategic plan and giving you a deep dive into that and providing the opportunity for you to guide it as we continue to further develop strategies and so forth. So that's that. And now if I may, can, can we get Alexa on the phone? This is Alexa Simpson. She's a nursing student. She is from Overland Park. I had the delightful opportunity to have a conversation with her on Monday of this week. Oh, you're going to love her, just like you have the students we have before. And so if we're going to take down my slide and bring up Alexa, Alexa, how are you tonight?
I'm great. How are you?
I'm doing great.
So just thank you for having me today. It's an honor to be able to represent my nursing program and be able to talk to you guys today about my experience at JCC. So like the president said, I am a nursing student. I'm actually in the JCC KU partnership program, so I take classes, ADN classes at JCC, and I'm also doing online classes at KU to earn my BSN next month. So I'll be graduating next month, and I'm really excited about that. So a little bit about my journey or experience at JCC. It all started when, I just knew I wanted to become a nurse before I graduated high school, so I didn't waste any time after I graduated high school to start prerequisites. And I applied to the ADN program here one year after I did prereqs, and I was not accepted into that program at that time. My GPA wasn't good enough and my ACT score wasn't good enough. So that was devastating at the time, but it was the biggest blessing in disguise because I went to the JCC counselors and tried to figure out a schedule that best fit my life and focused on, okay, what programs can I apply to next for my bachelor's degree? And I applied to those three right after I did my prereqs, and I was accepted into all three of them, which was a shock because it was way different experience than I had before. And ever since of fall of 2019, I've been in the JCC KU partnership program. Nursing school has been, of course, very difficult, it's supposed to be, because we're going to be taking care of real people at the end of it. And of course, the pandemic added an extra obstacle to it as well, but I have been so grateful that I'm a student here. The faculty are absolutely amazing, and I'm honored that they get to teach me. They're all geniuses. And so I'm, I'm so blessed to have spent four years here and about to enter my professional career.
Awesome. You have questions for Alexa?
Alexa, we'll probably have some questions from the, from the board members. I know Dr. Bound has started this effort to make all of us feel inadequate by having superb students at each board meeting, and you're yet the most recent example of that. What kind of nursing do you want to do?
I actually just accepted a job in an Overland Park hospital, and I'll be working in the women's surgical unit, so taking care of women post-operative or post-op of any reproductive surgery. And I also will be floating to the mom baby unit because it's on the same unit. They want us to be able to float back and forth, and I'm super stoked about that, to take care of new moms and their new little babies.
Well, we're sorry we won't get to have you walk across the stage in person for graduation, as we are with thousands of other students, but other questions or comments from trustees?
Why is everyone looking at me when they say, is there, are there any questions? Everybody looks at me every time.
Laura always has questions, Alexa. Here it comes.
Quote.
Alexa, I would want to ask you, what would you tell other prospective students who don't get into the programs they first reach for?
Oh, my goodness. Keep going. I, I knew that some, some point it would happen, so I just kept on working towards it. And yeah, just keep going. Don't, don't lose your motivation because nursing programs are so competitive, and I know so many other programs are so competitive, so just keep working at it and not giving up if that's what your dream is.
Well, your perseverance and grit is to be admired, and we thank you for being an exemplary student model that kept, kept going. That's, that's fantastic, and it'll serve you well in your career for sure.
Alexa, I think that's all. Everybody would like to have comments, but thank you for your time today and, and your perseverance. And please tell anybody you know that Johnson County Community College is a place where you can succeed and get to the career you want, as you have done. So thank you. Dr. Bound, you want to close?
Thank you, Alexa.
Alexa, thank you so much. Appreciate you giving us some time this evening. And we'll see you at your pinning ceremony. Woo-hoo! All right.
Awesome. I'm happy to see you there.
All right. And with that, that concludes my report.
Not sure if I want to ask. Questions, Dr. Bound? Any other questions or comments?
If I may.
Sure, Trustee Cross.
I've got a lot of questions.
This is your one-third, one-seventh issue.
Questions, comments, and concerns this year. I'm not going to address them right now, Dr. Bound. I, you know, I see you making amends, striving in good faith to administer this college. Probably disagree with much of what you said and what is being told to you.
Okay.
I'm going to tell you in private, frankly, because I have some not positive things to say, based upon the repeated comments that are coming to me. And I know that, I mean, there's a difference, and I think what people don't understand is like, you know, people like to, people are smart, they put things together, you know, they start counting backwards from nine months. Like, they, they do crazy things to figure it out. When there's consistent and repeated characters that are central figures and issues, like it's not hard to figure out who they are. So I'm frustrated by it. I don't want to belabor the point or get into specifics or what figures are human beings just yet, but I'm about to. So I'm going to tell you some things in, in private, but I'm not remotely happy with what's going on.
I think it's important that we narrow that down, that you're talking about the testing center issue.
Yeah, I know. That's specific.
An overall performance value.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarifying. I, I think overall here, and I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but it seems to be my role in life, and it's job security. So, yeah, otherwise I appreciate everything. Please, it's, it's on one point, and I'm sorry to be a harbinger. People, bottom line is, some of the faculty just don't have faith to go to the ABC.
Okay.
And it's, it's unfortunate. And I do want to honor your request that we allow this process to unfold. So I'm, I'm going to toe that line however loosely.
Trustee, we'll cross. We'll talk.
Okay.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our new business. There is no new business. I don't have any old business, which would bring us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a part of our agenda with items that have already been reviewed in a routine or administrative in nature. They're normally handled in one motion and one vote. Every trustee has an opportunity to pull anything from the consent agenda and have that item considered separately and voted on separately. Trustees, are there any items on the consent agenda, Roman numeral 12 of our agenda, that anybody would like to pull and have considered individually? I see none, so I would accept a motion to, to approve the consent agenda as published.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Lawson, seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries six-zero. Dr. Cook having stepped out for a moment. We, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. Before I ask for a motion, it is 10 till 7:00. We have an opportunity to grab a delicious box lunch dinner before our executive session, or we can dive right into the executive session and you can eat, we can each take it home. Is there a preference of the board to, would you like to take 10 minutes and get started on that and then?
Are, are we not allowed to do both at the same time?
Well, we, we will move into the Lidl room and, and I think maybe we should not, if we're all eating at the same time in that space, it, I get a little concerned from a safety protocol standpoint of us all removing our mask and inhaling food. That's, that's a concern with it.
How's that different from any restaurant?
Pardon?
Nothing.
How long is the executive session?
We're closer. The executive session will be requesting one hour. What if I suggest that we start the executive session at five after seven and give us that amount of time, about 13 minutes to do?
Second.
Let me, let me get it. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations. No action will be taken during the session. The executive session will last for one hour, beginning at 7:05 PM and ending at 8:05 PM, at which time open session will resume at this same location for those in person and by Zoom video conference for the rest. We would like to invite Dr. Bound, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Weber, Dr. Harden, Dr. Cox, Dr. Singh, Rachel Leers, Colleen Chandler, Kelsey Nazar and Melody Rail to join this executive session. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by commis, uh, Commissioner, Trustee Ingram.
Why, thank you.
Seconded by Trustee Lawson.
That sounds good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will start the executive session at 7:05 PM. We'll be back here at 8:05 PM for those of you on the public Zoom session. Welcome back. We have returned from executive session. We ended about 8:04 and are now back in open session. No act, no binding action was taken during the executive session. The only thing left on the agenda is a motion to adjourn, which I will accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Ingram. That we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is carried. Thank you very much.